All right. Good evening. It is 6:34 PM on Wednesday, January 22, 2025. This is Brian Layton, the Chair of the School Committee. I am calling the School Committee meeting to order in accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law. Please be advised that this meeting is being broadcast at a later date over the Ludenberg Public Access Channel. The agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Both may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by open meeting law. The next item in the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is public comment. I'll open it to public comment Seeing none, I'll open it up to public comment from the committee. Mr. Beardmore?
Good evening. So just a couple of thoughts. I was unable to attend last Friday's meeting due to a professional commitment, and I have a fair understanding of the path we're on. Last Friday's meeting was just posted today, and I was unable to listen to it. But I think that if we are going to appoint a screening committee, which I think we should do, that we need to be able to communicate with the screening committee, ideally in advance of their work, what our hopes and dreams are from a new superintendent. I have my own thoughts on this. I can tell you they very closely align to those four goals that I communicated almost three years ago. But I do have some thoughts in terms of core competencies of a prospective candidate and what I think we should lean into in terms of who we should be selecting or what the qualifications and talents are of the person that I hope to select. And I would hope to communicate that with the members of the selection committee in advance of them going down the process of even screening resumes. So for whatever that's worth, I think that we should schedule some time to do that. Secondly, and I promised myself on the way in I would not be melodramatic about this, but suffice to say this does come from a position of frustration. I know we tell our students to be prepared for class. I am very unprepared for tonight's meeting. I checked the folder yesterday at 3:00 PM, and there was one document in it. I checked it again today between work and going to a track meet and coming here. That document had been replaced, and there were 10 additional documents plus two versions of the agenda. One of those documents was 39 pages long, I believe, and heavily edited, and I was unable to find an area to go with it. So I take this job pretty seriously, and I don't feel like I am able to put in, really give it my all if I am not given proper time to prepare. And we discussed this in a workshop, I think, not this past summer, but the summer before. Our ask was, I believe, 48 hours, and that is by far the exception. The rule seems to be same day, and it's just not sustainable for me, particularly going into the busy season that we're going into. And this is not directed at anybody in particular. I know that what we have today represents a lot of work product, and I'm appreciative of that. But I also have a full-time job that I do a lot of work product for, and I'm expected to turn it in and give my superiors and team proper time as well. So I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment from the committee?
I was going to talk more during the search committee part of things about actually about goals and coming up with what we were looking for from the search committee and proposing a workshop where we could all sit around at a table and collaboratively come up with what we were looking for. So yeah, we could have a discussion on that during the search committee agenda.
Yeah, I think that would be great. Any other public comment? All right, seeing none. Next item on the agenda is the Chair's report. I just have a couple of things. I want to congratulate Jennifer Warren Diamond, who was selected as the town manager by the Select Board. Also, Representative Scarsdale recently reached out that UMass Memorial was going to be taking over for Neshoba Hospital, so that was good news. And Ms. Arshinbo relayed today to me the information that the governor's budget was just put out today, so we'll talk about that and the budget numbers as well. Do we have a student representative's report today? Not seeing any. All right, next item on the agenda is review and approve minutes. We have the minutes from December 18, 2024 in your folder. Any questions, comments?
Subject to my earlier commentary, I have not read them and will not be voting.
Any other discussion? Now look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the 18th of December.
I will second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is to review and approve line item transfers, warrants, and donations. We had warrants from January 7, 2025, to January 15, 2025 totaling $364,142.06. Do you have anything additional to that?
I do not.
All right. Next on the item on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Dr. Burnham?
I wanted to give you some information relative to an item on the agenda a little bit later. The committee had asked me to explore alternatives for locations for central offices. I did reach out to a realtor in town. Currently, there are no properties that would be adequate for our needs. We did reach out to get some information relative to leasing portable offices or trailers in order to provide enough space for all of the offices and the ACE program. We'd be looking at three trailers, and the approximate cost would be somewhere between $110,000 and $150,000 a year. The 911 phone upgrades, we encountered a delay. The completion of this project was supposed to occur yesterday, but the turnover of the system in each building requires participation of Verizon, and these turnovers have to be scheduled with them for each building. And the appointments for these turnovers have to be 10 days apart. So it's going to be another couple of weeks before we are fully turned over to 911. The Power School breach, final update went out today relative to that breach. We are in the process of sending individual notices with recommended actions to take to anyone that we identified as potentially compromised through that breach. So those will be out by the end of the week. Calendar reminders, next school committee meeting is February 5 is our next regular school committee meeting. That's 6:30, which will be hybrid from Town Hall, and February 26 at 6:30, hybrid from the middle high school. And a reminder that Monday, February 17 is President's Day. All schools and offices will be closed on that Monday. Additionally, the schools will remain closed for the entire week. That is February vacation week. Turn it over to you.
Thank you. Any questions, comments for the superintendent? Mr. Beardmore?
Do we have any sort of, I saw the notice that went out to parents today relative to this Power School breach, but I don't know that I've seen anything in particular in terms of what happened, the magnitude of what was taken, a report from Power School relative to, you know, that may have been looked at by our IT staff to determine if we need to follow up directly with them or if there are any liabilities that we may want to pursue.
Power School has not provided us with any report relative to the direct impact for our school district. We're still waiting to hear from them. They did indicate that they would be reaching out to anybody that was potentially impacted. They will be offering two years of credit monitoring for anybody who is potentially impacted. Given that it has taken this long to get anything of any real detail relative to the impact to us from Power School, we're not waiting. Anybody that our IT team has identified as potentially compromised, we are reaching out to directly. We are providing them that information relative to the services that Power School will be offering to them so that they can be proactive and take some steps themselves to protect their identity. That's all I have relative to our impact from Power School.
How many emails are we sending out? Do we know? Because this is the only information I've gotten is this email.
Just under 100. There were, I believe, 82 that were compromised with one piece of potential information, and there were a total of 15 that were potentially compromised with a different piece of information. So we're sending the appropriate notification with action steps dependent upon how your information or what information may have been compromised. So there's two different ways that people have potentially been compromised with identifying information. We're sending a specific letter if you were compromised, let's say, with your social security number. There's a letter that will outline steps that you can take. I can forward those letters to you.
Okay.
And then there's another one with other identification, potential identification information than not social security based. So there's a different letter that we're sending to those folks.
Was it students or staff or both?
Both.
Okay. So who identified who the potentially compromised information was? Was it our side or Power School?
Well, we haven't heard anything from Power School.
So Power School hasn't communicated at all about this?
They have not informed us as to the number of people potentially impacted nor who those people are. The information that we're acting on now is based on our IT consultants investigating to see whose information was potentially exposed. So we're acting on that rather than waiting for Power School to provide us any specific information or for Power School to reach out directly to those individuals. They will reach out directly to those individuals.
Will they? Because they're not communicating with us right now.
You have to remember, this was a nationwide impact. I just don't know how long it will take, and I don't want to leave any of our families or staff vulnerable, so we're not waiting for additional information. Based on our IT's investigation, we're notifying those individuals ourselves.
I do appreciate the proactiveness in this instead of just waiting. I really appreciate how proactive that is.
For what it's worth, I work in this space, so I'm a little bit more sensitive to this probably than the average bear, and I appreciate, as Laura just articulated, what you're doing. I have a number of questions, most of which I don't want to air in public. I'd like to request that this be the topic of an executive session relating to potential litigation at our next meeting.
Okay.
Ms. Arshinbo?
My question was on a different topic. Alternatives to central office. Is the possibility of moving into a school still a possibility?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we had some plan.
And I think, given the budget that we'll get an overview of tonight, it's looking like the likely option.
Sure.
Yeah. Okay.
Mrs. Skolmbrini, did you have anything?
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, moving on. The next item on the agenda is presentation. We do not have the presentation for tonight. New business action item on preschool tuition increase.
So you have a request to approve a 4% tuition increase for FY '26. The memo outlines that historically, annually, it's a 4% increase, and we're recommending the same for next year.
Any questions or comments that the committee members have?
A move we approved as proposed.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is discussion on health and PE curriculum frameworks and PE credits.
So I'd like to invite Ms. DeSantrey and Dr. Bukas to the table.
I'm sorry?
If I could sit in the chair, I would be doing that. Julie Allen?
I'll just plug you in.
Don't change anything.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us tonight to discuss the PE standards and the discussion around waivers for physical education at the high school. Dr. Bukas is going to provide some updates on the PE health standards with a few slides, and then I will go into the discussions with the groups that I've had around the recommendation that I'll make for that. So, Dr. Bukas?
Thank you, Mr. Santri. So I think, as I mentioned earlier, we have been part, there are seven of us in the district, who've been part of the comprehensive health and PE leadership network that Desi has put together. There are seven of us representing all four schools in various roles. And what's been great is that we've been able to attend many of the department's trainings, their meetings, and presently, we are aligning the frameworks in a document with what we currently do in Ludenberg, so we can see where there's alignment, where there are some gaps. And the next thing we'll be doing is scoping and sequencing that out. So more information to come as we do that work to the school committee, probably later this spring. But for tonight's purposes, what I wanted to do is to pull out and provide a backdrop or foundation for Mr. Santri's conversation later. So what I did was I pulled some of the components of the, go back to the slide, the original slide, that would be great, thanks, some of the components, yep, of the vision statement from the frameworks and also the origin of the frameworks. So the very first piece is that all Massachusetts students will develop health and physical literacy. And so it's a quick definition for you at the bottom of that slide. Physical literacy is skills, the knowledge, and the confidence that allow people to be active throughout their lives. And that is a statement you're going to see many times, and it was emphasized in all of our department, the Department of Ed's Leadership Network meetings and workshops. And so the idea is that students will develop physical literacy through educational opportunities that include physical education, health education, and the development of social and emotional competencies. The other piece that was really important was that a comprehensive health and physical education programming are critical components of a well-rounded education. So when we think about the whole child, they're being very comprehensive. Again, that was something that was emphasized in all of our workshops. We are charged to provide this type of educational programming through the frameworks, so it definitely encourages all schools to implement this type of programming. Next slide. So a couple of the key developments and shifts in the new frameworks from the old ones, which are from 1999. And so the very first one is that there is a much stronger emphasis on the practices. And the practices are the processes and the skills needed to promote and maintain, again, you're hearing this term, lifelong physical, mental, emotional, and social health. Within the framework, there's also a much more explicit representation and integration of physical education that recognizes the contribution that physical education makes to the overall health and well-being of students. And again, this health and well-being idea has also been emphasized through all the workshops we've attended. The last piece I wanted to share with you are some of the goals of physical education that are emphasized throughout the new frameworks. And these three are articulated as the goals of PE. The first is to improve and maintain overall health and well-being. The second is to exhibit pro-social behaviors, and the third is to foster enjoyment and motivation for lifelong fitness and physical activity. And how is this done through the frameworks? There's an emphasis on students knowing the components and the principles of fitness, that they can develop a fitness program, they can use movement to enhance their overall health and well-being, that they can recognize that physical activity is multipurpose, and it can also vary based on social and cultural contexts. They can also recognize in their life and then throughout their lives to use physical movement for things like health and stress release, enjoyment, challenge, self-expression, and social interactions. And so again, it's really incumbent on districts and schools to provide educational programming so students can participate in activities so that students can reach the goals that are stated in the new frameworks around physical education. So that is a backdrop, too.
Sure. And this has been a topic of discussion in my school advisory councils now, middle school and high school for over a year. So we expanded that discussion to include my high school department head leadership team to seek further information from Dr. Bukas, as well as neighboring districts through my MidWatch Principals Association, and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And a large part of this recommendation comes from the new state standards in PE that plays a role in my recommendation. So based upon the guidance and the feedback I received, it's my recommendation that we don't provide a waiver for physical education classes at Ludenberg High School. I don't feel the teaching of standards in a content area by a licensed teacher in the building can be replicated in the participation of varsity sport. So I'd be welcome to answer any questions or concerns that you may have.
Mr. Beardmore?
I have lots of questions, but thank you very much for taking the time to do this. I've been on this committee for three years, and we have just had the longest conversation that we have had in the school committee about physical education. So this conversation is long overdue. Dr. Bukas, you mentioned that the standards that were updated in 2023 were updated from standards in 1999.
1999, 1998. Thank you.
I'm sorry?
98 or 99. Thank you for the question.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do we currently have a physical education curriculum?
We have a program that we use that is a virtual program as well as some teacher-created units.
And does that align to the standards of either 1999 or 2023?
I would probably guess there's a mix of them because formerly, the teacher-created ones are based on the old ones. They've been there for a long time. The new platform, I believe, is one or two years old that's being used, and taking a quick look at it, a lot of the programs that are out there now are aligned with the national framework, and Desi has aligned many of the new framework standards to the national standards. So there probably is some consistency there. But again, that's the work that we're doing right now is to take a look at what we're doing and how it aligns with the totality of the framework.
You mentioned in the updated standards, you cited multiple times the phrase health and well-being and a couple of times lifelong fitness and physical activity.
Yes.
Were those not outlined and promoted in the 1999 framework?
You might have to go back and take probably a fine-tooth comb look, but I don't recall seeing it. I remember it being much more around certain activities that students would do as opposed to this idea that we want to emphasize how students are in the world, how they will be in their future world, how they can take care of themselves physically, mentally, emotionally. There's a much greater emphasis on that in the new framework, and certainly that has been emphasized in the presenters during all the workshops that we've attended.
And I'm encouraged by that. I don't want this to come across as being critical. I think that what you're describing is a good thing. I have a child that graduated from Ludenberg High School a few years ago, and I have a child that's in Ludenberg High School right now. I can't connect in my head how long my kid can plank to any of this stuff. And this is the stuff that they bring back in terms of what's happening in gym class, right? So having never seen a phys ed curriculum, getting observations coming from my children, having attended open houses and gone into the weight room and heard from our phys ed teachers what they're doing and what you're telling me now, don't connect. So, and I understand, these are, this is a framework that is dated now two years ago, but it's a little bit frustrating to me like how this all connects. And I'm a little bit skeptical of the time we're spending in phys ed currently.
And I can certainly share in the amount of time that it can take for when a framework is released to the time that the department provides some of the resources and helping us understand it and unpack it, and how long that can take for a district then to also align that curriculum with what we're doing and making, standards rather, with what we're doing, and then seeing what else is out there, right, so that we can supplement and make sure that we're making those changes. But rest assured that we are looking to see what is currently happening and how it measures according to what the research.
In the slides that you presented where you cite multiple times health and well-being and lifelong fitness and physical activity, there isn't a measurable standard in here that I can find, yet Mr. Santri mentioned standards and our ability to align to standards as a reason for not granting a waiver. And I'm wondering, what are the standards? Like, what are we measuring to? And do we know what it's going to take to get to that measurement?
I understand the question. The framework contains several hundred standards.
Okay.
They're organized by practice.
So it's considerably more than what's in these three slides?
Oh, yes. This is a quick, I pulled some things just to ground that they have shifted and what those shifts are. There are seven practices. Those practices, within each practice at each grade level band, there are several topics from which districts can use those topics as a mechanism to teach the practice. The important thing is that each practice is, for lack of a better term, practiced. I wish they called them something else than practices, within that grade span. So that's the work that we need to do in the scope and sequencing once we've determined where we are doing certain standards throughout the entire framework.
So it sounds like it's a lot of work.
It's multi. And just to add, the new comprehensive health and PE framework lives in STEAM. It lives in the science classroom. It lives in the social studies classroom. It lives in the library. It lives with our psychologists and our DCBA's and our social workers. It lives with our health teachers, and it lives in our PE class. That's how comprehensive they are. So we've been to a session around digital safety and digital literacy and how important it is for students to be safe online. That's part of these standards. So that speaks to what's happening in libraries. That speaks to what's happening in our STEM classrooms. There's a piece in here around understanding food and nutrition. Um, there's a piece in here around understanding food and nutrition and different cultures and how food is used in different cultures. I've talked to, um, Nadine, who's our food director, and how we do some of that work in our food services program, as well as in our social studies curriculum in the elementary school. So getting our arms around where we're doing all of this is, is multifaceted and, and involves lots of people.
When do you think you're gonna have that?
Yeah, um, great question. Um, I'm hoping by May, we should be able to come to you with an overview of the work that we've done and to share with you where we see some of those gaps and what our next steps are.
Okay. A-again, I, I, I'm very skeptical here, uh, and I appreciate the intent. I certainly appreciate that this is multifaceted and it belongs in multiple classrooms and you have a difficult job at connecting the dots. I, I'm a skeptic of phys ed, particularly in high school. I, I, the evidence that I have seen, it is not time well spent, and we are about to be in a situation where we need to make incredibly difficult decisions about our budget. And I, you know, are, are we gonna let go of a math teacher and not a phys ed teacher? You know, like, I mean, those are the, and I hate to throw these out here, right? But these are the levels of decisions that, that we need to make. And, and I think you're right, I think a lot of this can be covered in other classes across our curriculum, it's multidisciplinary. Um, I, I, I fail to see what a varsity coach cannot cover that a gym class has to cover, but I'm anxious to hear your additional feedback once you're able to, uh, connect the dots on this.
Mr. Skolbrin?
So two questions. The first question is, is there a state standard currently for physical education in order to graduate? Like, do they have to take a certain number of classes?
Yes, yeah.
And that's, are we currently meeting that standard?
Yes.
All right. So I guess I'm trying to figure out, like, it sounds like you're updating based on new standards set down by the state, and the hope is to improve our current offerings to match that?
Yes.
Um, I, I guess what I'm, what I'm trying to figure out is like, in part because of Peter's questions, like, what's, like, why does it take until long? And what are we doing now that's incorrect?
Um, I, I don't wanna say incorrect, 'cause I think it's based on the old standards is what people had, and so I don't wanna carry, necessarily characterize it that way. Um, I, and I, again, I, I've been here for six months, and so I'm still trying to wrap my, my arms around some of the happening, so I'll certainly extend this to Mr. Santri to answer. Um, I think, um, traditional PE classes, or since we were at the late nineties, have been around playing a sport. You know, you, you're running, you're playing basketball, you're playing soccer, but you're not necessarily learning and understanding movement and how that impacts your physical health, you're not understanding, um, sort of how to create a fitness plan that might be personal for you, understanding how movement impacts your mental wellbeing, um, can also interact your so, like, your sociability. So it's, it's a different lens almost on physical movement and what it means to be a physical, physically literate person for your entire life. So many schools, um, who have started some of this work have looked to more, I wanna say individualistic kinds of activities like yoga, like Pilates, like archery, like snowshoeing, like different things that can take you throughout your life. Most of us are not going to play on a soccer team in our fifties. Most of us are not going to play on a basketball team, but we might be doing one of those lifelong kinds of activities, so there's a bit of a shift. Now, it doesn't mean all of those things go away, it means that there's a little bit more of a balance so that we understand, some are even including dance, 'cause that's in the standards too, the new standards. But the idea that there are lifelong movement activities, um, that you can do after you graduate high school.
Yeah, that makes sense. Thank you.
Carol?
Um, I would just comment that having done my fair amount of curriculum implementation in my day, um, it does take that long, that the standards come out, you have to unpack them, you have to figure out what you're currently doing, what you need to do next, where are we gonna get the equipment? We have no money, how are we gonna get the stuff together to do what we need to do? Um, looking at the standards, I, I can see definite differences from when my kid said gym, for sure. Um, and, you know, I'd be quite anxious to see how this all comes out.
Yeah, I think, uh, along with what Carol said too, I think it's the old-school gym of just playing floor hockey is, is kind of gone, it's more educational-based and trying to teach lifelong skills. So, yeah, I appreciate the, the presentation and the discussion. Anything else? Anybody else?
No, thank you very much.
The next item on the agenda is the LHS Program of Studies.
If you'd like to, huh?
Okay. Thank you.
This is, um, just for discussion this evening, this is not for voting.
Yeah, just a discussion.
The information on the, as well as the Program of Studies, just for discussion, and we'll come back on a future meeting for a vote for approval.
So next item on the agenda is a discussion on the LHS Program of Studies.
Great, well, thank you for having me here to discuss the, uh, proposed, uh, LHS Program of Studies. I'd like to thank my high school leadership team for making the necessary changes that best need to meet, meet the needs of our students. I believe they've been provided a copy of the proposed changes, uh, and with your permission, I'd like to, uh, tackle this in parts. Uh, first, the annual edits or changes to the course offerings, and then it's gonna be a little more in-depth conversation around the competency determination that has been changed by our ballot question, uh, in November, if that's okay with you. We continue to, uh, offer a variety of courses to our students. One of those additions this year, um, we'll be offering it again that we didn't last year, is Honors Community Service Learning, and it's an option for students in, uh, the ELA selections. We've also made some changes to our math courses. Uh, Statistics is now Probability and Statistics, and this change in title is a better describes the content of the course, and it also aligns to the state definition of advanced coursework in which, uh, ties into our state accountability. So, uh, we went through, looked at the standards to ensure that we were meeting the criteria for advanced coursework with the Probability and Statistics. We now offer, uh, Business Math Two in exchange for dropping Advanced Mathematical Decision-Making. Business Math Two picks up where Business Math One, um, drops off. It's a semester course, and it covers, uh, insurance and investments, budgeting, personal finances, managing business costs, profit losses, uh, besides some editing. Um, so that's, uh, Business Math Two, and besides some editing and formatting revisions, I believe that is the course selection portion of the Program of Studies. So the biggest change of the year is that the removal of the MCAS exam as a competency determination for graduation. So for over twenty-one years, uh, the Grade Ten MCAS test has served as the state's competency determination. The ballot question passed in November removed this as a state requirement for graduation, and the state has mandated that districts create their own competency determination that is separate from our local graduation requirements, and that cannot be the MCAS exam. So this CD, I'll refer to it from now, must at least require students to demonstrate mastery of the common core skills, competency, and knowledge in the tenth grade levels of English, math, and science. Tenth grade level is defined by the standards that's outlined in the frameworks of the tenth grade English, at least Algebra One and Geometry in either Biology, Physics, or Technology and Engineering, and that is the language of the new law, just reading it for you. Um, so utilizing this guidance that we had, the LHS leadership team began to work and develop a criteria that meets that competency determination standard for the state. We also networked with several, uh, districts in the state to ensure that our CD fit the criteria that other districts were designing. We presented the draft to the superintendent for her input, uh, and we now have a draft of that CD for you to review that is now in the Program of Studies. So we were under a tight timeline, November fifth, this vote happened, we received more, um, direction from DESI, I believe, on December, like, eighth. And Lunenburg and other districts in the state must have this competency determination in place for, uh, students possibly graduating in twenty twenty-five that did not pass the MCAS test. So I'm going to read you what we have developed as a draft for Lunenburg High School's competency determination. Uh, in order to receive a Lunenburg diploma, all students must meet the competency determination for coursework in addition to all local graduation requirements. In order to meet the competency determination required by state law, students must take and pass the following courses: English One, which is ninth grade English, English Two, which is tenth grade English, Algebra One or Algebra Two, Geometry, and Biology. So as per the CD law, tenth grade standards, uh, represent a critical benchmark in a student's academic development, ensuring they possess the foundational skills and knowledge necessary to succeed in upper letter, upper, upper-level high school courses in post-secondary education and the workforce. So students who do not meet the required school, uh, scores may enroll in an approved summer school course, credit recovery program, and/or complete an educational proficiency plan, which includes additional coursework, uh, and assessments to ensure they reach the necessary competency levels for the CD. Meeting these requirements alongside, alongside earning sufficient course credits is essential for graduation. So this, uh, is where it gets a little bit tricky, is when we have a student transition into us, uh, in the eleventh grade, uh, who maybe haven't passed the MCAS test. Um, so transfer students to Lunenburg who enter after ninth grade will undergo a transcript review by the principal or designee to determine whether coursework from the sending schools can be applied to the competency determination. If the review determines that the student has not met competency determination, alternatives will be offered to provide an opportunity for that student to meet this requirement. Alternatives may include summer school, online coursework, mastery, performance exams, or other alternatives deemed suitable by the principal or designee. Such alternatives may require additional time outside the day or school year. The principal shall be the arbiter of, uh, final decisions on the CD. So this is the draft, uh, of our competency determination for Lunenburg High School. It's awaiting your review and approval, I understand you're not gonna be doing that tonight, but I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Mr. Skolbrin?
What happens if somebody doesn't pass the class?
That, so that's where that additional coursework comes in, or the fact that we can put them on a, what's called an educational proficiency, proficiency plan. So if they are unable to pass that, they could take additional coursework, they could take a summer school class, or if they are able to pass, uh, Grade Eleven or Grade Twelve coursework as they move forward, I, me as a principal would be able to say that they have, they met our competency determination.
So there's no, like, opt-out test, they just have to do the coursework?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Giedemann?
These classes that you outline here, there's five classes. Those classes were part of our requirements previously, I seem to recall, so we're not adding anything, we're just kinda going back to a, basically, what was our previous coursework requirement?
Correct, and we are making sure, uh, Dr. Bookus, myself, and my department head, uh, leadership team is going through in those Grade Ten classes to ensure that they are aligning to the same standards that MCAS was assessing. So that is our kind of walkthrough, and having those Grade Ten courses, we can ensure that that CD is being met.
Okay. Thank you. Um, we have, I don't want, I know right, we're terminology, bear with me, 'cause I'm not educated. My terminology is crude. We have multiple tracks in these classes, we have honors, we have a standard, and we have something.
Essentials.
Essentials. I thought that's what it was, but I didn't wanna come up with the wrong thing. Um, so suffice to say, let, let's focus on the essentials level. For, let's say, ninth grade English. Is there a, are, are we, what is the standard and how do we determine the standard for essentials for ninth grade English? Right? Like, if, when I went to high school, I don't wanna say his name out loud, but I, everyone knew if you needed to pass World History, you would take this particular teacher because he walked out of the room when he gave a test, right? Like, that was the, that was the standard practice. Not to pile on, but I don't want that to happen, right? Like, so how do we, how do we, how do we ensure that there is a minimum standard for each of these essentials-level classes?
Sure, I think we do that through our curriculum work that we do, because the essentials still touches upon each grade level standards, it's just done it at a slower pace, and we can go back and look at our curriculum maps to ensure that those are aligning to our state frameworks and that we're making sure that those students are completing every piece of. I'm not gonna guarantee that, um, the things that you're describing, that they don't, that, those are past practices, I would say.
And I'm not accusing anybody of that. What I, what I was trying to do is illustrate that there are paths of lesser resistance, right? And I'm a hundred percent sure that our teachers are teaching the curriculum.
Sure.
What I'm, what I'm struggling with is how do I, how am I to be a hundred percent sure that the student is demonstrating knowledge of that curriculum? Right? Like, that, that's, that's the crux of the question.
So the special educator gets the hair up on my back when it says, like, it's an easier path, it, it's, uh, those essential courses have a lot more support than they would in the regular honors classes, that they are still aligning to the frameworks, that's the work we do every day with our curriculum.
And just to be clear, Mr. Santri, I said essentials, it could be at any level.
Sure.
There's still needs to be demonstration of mastery of some kind.
And I think we, and I think we do that through our assessments and our common assessments and ensuring that those are aligned to the state frameworks, and that we continue to look at those, and just like, um, you could pass an MCAS test with less than a proficient score, right? So you could pass an ELA class with a seventy or a sixty-eight or a sixty-seven, you're still accessing those standards. So I hope you don't think I'm skirting the question. Every class is determining on whether they touch upon the standards, right? I think that's what our, our work is at the high school.
Uh, the only other thing that I was just going to mention is that, uh, in her State of the State speech, the governor indicated that she's convening a committee of some sorts to look at this.
I'm sure it'll change five.
So this is gonna be a thing, right? Like, we're, I, I would imagine this is a conversation that we're gonna have repeatedly over the next few years as the ball bounces on.
Any additional comments, questions? Uh, the only thing I had was, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe there's, uh, social studies, history, uh, standards as well. Was there any consideration of including the history courses as a requirement as well?
So in the, um, seminar that Dr. Bookus attended is that the, the, the history is not part of the competency determination, only that civics project needs to be completed for our local graduation.
Uh, not at this time.
Not at this time. They also included world language and, um, yeah, and world language, but not at this time.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
Why do we list under the high school graduation requirements, why do we list side-by-side with the LHS requirements? Why do we also list the MasCor and Mas Higher Education admission standards?
Because MasCor is like the DESI standards that we try to adopt, so that's why we list them back and forth, because we follow the MasCor.
Okay, but in order to receive a high school diploma, a Lunenburg High School diploma, you need to do the things in the left column?
Yes.
Okay, that was just a little, uh, not unclear, but not, it had me wondering, that's all, but it makes sense, and I like that we go a little bit above and beyond and ask a little bit more of our graduates.
Dr. Burnham, in the meantime, if people have questions about the curriculum and Program of Studies, should they direct those questions to you?
They can direct questions to me relative to the Program of Studies, but they can also direct questions about.
They can direct questions to me relative to the program of studies, but they can also direct questions relative to the C D that we've drafted. Um, these will come back at a future meeting for a vote separately.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a discussion on the budget calendar.
So I received uh the budget calendar from the chair of the finance committee. And we are slated to present the school department budget to the finance committee on Thursday, March sixth.
So that is a, a week ahead of time of what we had thought.
We had thought and about two weeks ahead of what we had been in the past.
Well, usually. Any discussion?
It's tight.
This is a long way from ideal, but I think this year, given the circumstances that we're in. With. The budget, the town manager situation, the finance committee being understaffed. Um, this is going to be really hard, but I don't. You know, and you, you all know, like I've pushed back on this plenty over the last several years, I, I don't think we can push back on this one.
No, I think this is what they want, so they're going to get what budget we have at that time and that's what they're going to get.
Well, I, so, so here's the, here's the rub, right, which is. And, and I don't know the current position of the chair of the finance committee or the membership of the finance committee. When I was on the finance committee. We were fairly insistent that the budget that we were discussing with superintendent was a budget that was endorsed by the school committee. Right, and last year we were really close, I, I can't remember exactly where we were relative to the seventeen budgets, um but, but we were close. And I, I just like. What exactly are their expectations and what exactly are our expectations in terms of our ability to deliver it? It sounded like what you just described. Mister Chair, is something less than that, so.
Yeah, I think it, it, maybe it's not an approved budget by the school committee, but it's a, maybe it's a recommended budget or a, a budget that we recommend the superintendent present.
We need to find that out. We, we need to be.
Oh, I, I think we can present anything we want, it's, it's our, it's our presentation, right? Of the school committee, of the school department. Ms. Ashenbaum?
Um, as I'm the liaison to the finance committee, I did hear this discussion to which. Um, I believe the chair of FinCom acknowledged that this was a Herculean task and was uncertain that it would be completed. So I think we do the best we can. And that's all you can do, you can't do better than that.
And yeah, at first I thought March sixth is ridiculously early and this calendar really puts it into context. That we're going pretty late compared to. Other departments' presentations, so. I think it was kind of them to stick us towards the end.
I appreciate the fact that we're going with Monty Tech too, so when they ask us questions, we can also ask them. Did you ask Monty Tech those questions as well?
Um.
Ms. Ashenbaum?
The other thing is this is earlier than usual because they did not want to be in the position. On voting on articles all at the last minute. It, it was an attempt to make it less hairy and, and far better under control. And that their finalized report, which the last few years has been on a sheet of paper as you come in, not it as. Not in the booklet, they wanted it in with the rest of the articles. So in order to get that accomplished, everything got shifted earlier.
Thank you, Ms. Ashenbaum. Any other discussion on the F Y twenty six proposed uh budget count, or sorry, the budget calendar?
I have um, I request for some guidance on adjusting our timeline. Given that we won't vote and approve a budget on March fifth, so that I can take it on March sixth. Are we planning to do the budget hearing at the March fifth school committee meeting? Where typically in time for the hearing. I'm proposing a recommended budget for the discussion. If we do the hearing on March fifth. Notice needs to be in the paper one week earlier. Which means at our meeting on the twenty sixth in February. Um, we'd have to be making. A decision ahead of time, what number and what percentage. We're going to post as part of that notice for the public hearing.
So, yeah, just. Of the things that I forget from year to year, it's some of the particulars around the. What we're, what we have to do versus what we can do. So yes, we have to have a public hearing and yes, that public hearing does need to stipulate a number. The school committee. Can do whatever it wants to do with that number. So if you were to say my proposal is a hundred dollar budget. And you put that in the Lunenburg ledger and you present that budget to the school committee. The school committee can do whatever it wants with that budget to include make it ninety or a hundred and ten. Like there's, there's nothing binding that number to what goes in the warrant or the town manager's budget or anything else.
That's right.
It's just a, here's the number that you're presenting at that public hearing. Is that, is that a fair enough?
I, I think that that's fair enough. Um. This. This budget cycle, we're being crunched a little bit from both ends. Um. I haven't received a target number yet from the town manager. I know that he's been um. Trying to give us the best, most realistic number that he can. Um. Because I think he recognizes that in all departments, the operational budgets are just not sufficient, right? Um, and I think also to avoid, you know, nine different versions of a budget again uh this year, so. Normally by this time, I'm able to inform the committee as to, you know. What a realistic budget number might be looking like and generally speaking, what we might have to do to get there. Um. So I don't have that information yet for you. And we'll get to the uh, the budget overview. I'm not even calling it a proposed budget really. Um. Because we have a lot of decisions to make relative to the information that we've been sharing over the last couple of months at meetings relative to. Revolving accounts dwindling, we can't rely on them. Um, that means more things have to go into the budget. So we, we're going to show you a really big number, but hopefully that helps. Provide some context for some of the conversations and the decisions that we'll have to make around. Are we going to restructure fees for student activities? Are we going to restructure or increase uh athletic fees? Um. What, what do we want to do about school choice? Um. All of these decisions will have some impact on, on the shape of the budget. Um. Little bits here and there, but every little bit actually makes a difference. Um. So I think. Probably by the meeting on the twenty sixth of February. I will definitely have a, a number from the town manager. We. Absolutely should have a definitive number on health insurance. And my team and I during the month of February are going to have some really difficult decisions to make relative to the cuts that we would have to make. We will start with the list of cuts that was on the table last year. But we might make different decisions this year based on. Different ways of looking at things, uh different ideas, shifting need. Um, so I won't say that every position that was on the list last year that did not get cut last year. Is definitely on the list again this year. There might be some other. Positions uh on a list for consideration. We will do our best to give you some insight. Into that at the February fifth meeting.
So we won't have a number, when do you think we'll have a number from the town manager? You said February twenty?
I think now that the governor's budget is out, um, that, that will be some help, honestly. I'm expecting any, any time now that I'll, I'll find out what our target number would be.
So I, I mean, the reality here is we're probably going to have a couple of extra meetings in the month of February.
Exactly.
No, I'm, because I'm looking at February twelfth and I'm thinking we're going to have to. Yeah, we're going to have to add a, add a meeting or something because this is, I don't think we have enough time. To get this done because we also. We need to allow the public to have input on this too and having a hearing on the fifth and then going into FinCom on the sixth, there's no time to make adjustments.
I, I think we should first of all consider extra meetings, but, and that may be hard for us to do, present company included, but I think we have to kind of figure that out. Um, and I think that we should. There's nothing preventing us from having multiple public hearings as well, right? Like there's a, a variety of different scenarios.
Right, we, we historically have added a Q and A for the budget to multiple meetings.
So we could, we could very easily target a public hearing on the fifth. You can present on the sixth, whatever the content is of that public hearing. With the proviso that, you know, it, it is whatever it is at that time, it's, it would be purely speculation for us to say. We'll agree, we won't agree, there's more work to be done, whatever, but I think we should target a public hearing on the fifth. And then if we need to have another public hearing or we need to have a more budget action at a subsequent meeting later in March, then, you know, so be it.
Mr. Scullbry.
I think one of the things that we should do before we start adding extra time and extra meetings. Is we should have one session where we get rid of everything on the agenda except for the budget. We do not need to do meeting minutes, we do not need to do regular updates, a lot of this stuff that's happening, unless it is absolutely essential, it should be off. And we should have like one, one session where we're just going to talk about the budget. I feel like a lot of the time we're in these meetings, we are just doing routine updates where it's like, okay, fine, whatever. But like, if we're going to add more time, we first need to use the time that we have allocated already more concentrated, more directly, more efficiently. Like I, I mean, I'm glad that, that we have information about a whole bunch of different things, but like quite frankly. I just don't think that like. You know, this is not really nice to say, but like, I don't want any updates where I'm not voting on stuff. Like honestly, it's great to hear that stuff, but we should have voted on those two things that we just talked about. Like I don't know what they're going to say that's going to change it, but like if they don't know what the answers are going to be, because the thing is not done. Then we shouldn't hear about it, and if we're hearing about it, then we should vote, but like all of these things that are just like regular updates. It, it doesn't make any sense to me and if the budget is really tight and the schedule is really tight, we got to clear the decks. Like no approval of meeting minutes, no like updates about, you know, the elevator breaking down, I mean, we had like. All told, probably like two hours of how much the elevator doesn't work last year during budget season and like. It doesn't matter, like it just doesn't matter, we've got to be more direct and more focused.
Mr. Beadmore.
I, I'm not against prioritization, but. This is the job we signed up for and I know we're going to go back again this year.
So get allocated time.
I mean, this, this takes time, this work takes time and we have other responsibilities. Such as the things that we've talked about this evening that are part of the job description of a school committee member that can't wait an extra month and a half. So we've got to do our jobs and yes, we have to prioritize, but we have to do our jobs and, and this is going to take time.
I think the challenge with the budget is it's constantly changing as time goes on, we're getting new numbers, so we really do get updates each meeting that we have. Oftentimes the numbers are changing and we're getting new and updated numbers. Ms. Ashenbaum?
My, my.
Ms. Zoski?
March fifth for the legal requirement of a hearing would work. With the understanding that, yeah, we would also have more public input later as well because it does feel very off to me. To have a public hearing and then immediately the next day go into finance committee with that same budget and not. Listen to the public during the meeting, so, during the hearing, so I would.
The definition of a public hearing is to solicit community input.
Yeah.
So there will be a presentation, I would imagine, it doesn't even have to be actually in a public, a, a budget presentation. But the whole point is to get feedback from the community and we can take action following the hearing. That changes the number that we could then bring the next day to the finance committee, right? Like we have a great deal of.
Well, I think the hope too is there's other people watching the finance committee meeting too and.
Right.
That they also see that and want changes. Ms. Ashenbaum?
I. I, I don't have, I understand Tony's point, but there's certain things we have to keep doing. And um, I'm fine with doing it this way, but if we change the budget. Are we, we then required to do a formal? Public hearing again?
No.
No? So you do your public hearing once and if you have to change it after that, you can.
Yeah, I think you just notify the finance committee, send them the information.
Then I'm okay with that.
That's fishy.
Well, it is, I mean.
We changed it after, we changed it.
How many times have we changed it?
After the override.
Of town meeting, yeah, I mean.
I mean, I guess in the end it, it all has to get approved at town meeting anyways, so it's still over subject to the oversight of the community, so.
Mr. Scullbry.
I am just concerned that we are going to repeat what we did last year and what we did last year was a disaster. It was confusing, it was a mess, everybody was unhappy, we never got any sort of finality until it was done. I really firmly believe that if you give people an hour or you give people a day, the chances are they're going to do about the same amount of work. Right, it's, you, you can fill up all of this time, the more time we give people, we just need to say. This is the deadline when the budget, the proposed budget is due, it must be done this day. Then we have a hearing where we have people comment, then we have one more presentation and that's it. I, like, you see this all over the place, if you give people more time, they'll find more stuff to do, but it will not improve the bottom line. And it will not improve the quality of the presentation, we just need to be more focused.
I strenuously disagree. I, I think.
It's just the truth.
I think what was evidence last year, as much as you didn't like it and I didn't like it either.
I don't like it either.
The decisions that we came to were informed by a lot of work sitting in this room and on that stage and in a town hall. About the difficulty of the situation and we made very consequential decisions about. The override number and the music program and positions and we would not have made those decisions. Had we not taken the time to really air out those topics. And, and you could say, no, we all need to get it into a, an hour. And then we would have a whole lot of three to two or four to one or five to nothing, no votes. Because we would not be able to build the consensus that we built as a, as a, as a committee last year. And I didn't like it either, I understand your frustration, this is a messy business and it takes time.
I get it, but if we are inviting messiness, it seems to be sloppy practice and I will say this. We heard very good presentations at public meetings, especially from kids. We also heard the same presentations more than once and like. I, I'm grateful that they were willing to stand up and say the same thing multiple times, it shows commitment, but like. Uh, we didn't need to hear some of those things like fifty times and like, I'm not saying any one person should be silenced or not talk, everybody should be allowed to participate. But like we need to concentrate that participation so that it's meaningful. Having like five meetings where we do the same thing five times just doesn't make any sense and it doesn't, it improved the bottom line. It doesn't make the final product better, I mean, we had a meeting because there was like a glitch or a typo. And it was because we were doing too much in multiple meetings, it just meant that we were unfocused and I think that that had real consequences. I will, I will say this, Mandy and T J are sitting in the back of the room today. Had they not been capable of getting that override passed, all of the solicitation, all of the chatting, all the consensus building would have amounted to nothing. The override was what saved our bacon, not having fifteen meetings where you heard the same five things over and over again.
I disagree, I think the message has to be.
Completely disagree with you.
That's it, I couldn't disagree anymore.
The message has to be repeated so people hear it because people don't watch every single meeting.
People are watching, whether we do it five times or one time.
They don't watch every single meeting, some of them just tune into one meeting. And a lot of people need to hear the same message over and over again.
Carol and I could not have gone to town meeting with the authority and the command of the topics and the conviction of the position that we took had we not put in the time that we put in, both as individuals and as a committee. That is, that is the nature of the beast.
All right, I would like to keep the the agenda moving tonight. Uh, I think we've covered the budget calendar. I'd like to turn it over to the superintendent for the FY twenty-six proposed budget, uh, for a discussion on that. I do wanna add, just before she goes, that of Ms. Arshinbo's numbers, she had mentioned that the governor's budget, uh, proposed budget to come out. Uh, Lunenburg's FY twenty-twenty-six local aid distribution for chapter seventy funding is proposed at nine million, one hundred and nine thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars. The unrestricted general government aid, one million, three hundred and thirty thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars. Also in that message, uh, the, it does include the fifth year of Student Opportunity Act implementation. The rate for inflation is one point nine three percent in all categories, save benefits, which is six point one three percent. And there is a seventy-five dollar pupil minimum increase included, which is different from last year's, I believe it was a hundred and four per student. Dr. Burnham?
Okay, so we're queuing up the slides. Again, this, we typically come in the second meeting in January with a proposed budget. I wouldn't say that this is something I'm proposing, this is more context, reality check. Um, as I alluded to earlier, the revenues that we have been able to rely on in recent years, they're, they're dwindling. Grant monies are gone, revolving accounts have been tapped. We've had conversations, no decisions have been made yet about what to do with fees. So we've built a lot of these things into the budget, and it's a big number. All right, so every year in the slide deck, we include the mission statement and the vision statement. It's our mission to provide all students with the skills, confidence, and passion for lifelong learning so that they may find their own path to successful careers, active citizenship, and rewarding lives. Um, and how we do that is, you know, through student-centered instruction, high-quality curriculum, um, and making sure that we're attending to the whole child. This was um, a slide that was in last year's budget slides, um, that kind of recapped where we've been as we've been working on the strategy for continuous improvement since it was approved in November of twenty nineteen. Uh, I updated um, the slide deck to reflect that we did receive an override for FY twenty-five. When we started in FY nineteen, the strategy had four big objective areas. Last year and this year, we started focusing all of our action plans under this one objective area, which was cultivating climate and culture. As we started our work on the strategy, there was, in the realm of academics, no curriculum leadership beyond the department heads at the high school, no district-adopted, standards-aligned, rigorous, on-grade-level curriculum in any of the content areas K eight, no district benchmark assessments in literacy or math, no data to determine need for intervention, no intervention model for academics, no referral process for intervention, and no or very limited Carmen planning time. In the realm of behavioral health, we had no district-wide tier-one SEL curriculum. We had one social worker for the district, largely serving the high school students. Uh, we had six guidance counselors across the district, no intervention model for behavioral health and no referral model for intervention. Fast forward to where we are now, all of those things are in place. And our behavioral health staff has been increased. We have a social worker in each school and we have guidance counselors uh, in the schools from uh, the elementary up through the high school. We always provide you some information on student enrollment numbers. We've been fairly steady the last few years, up or down roughly ten total. We always give you um, information relative to the current class sizes. You can see in a couple of areas, uh, grade three, we're at twenty-five in a classroom, grade six, we're at twenty-six in a classroom. But elsewhere throughout the district, we're, we're below twenty-five in a classroom. Even the ranges at the high school level are mostly below twenty-five. And this is how the, the numbers have uh, looked over the last um, couple of years. We haven't really seen any major swing um, in class sizes. We started reporting the range of class sizes for the high school last year, so I can't give you data going back beyond last year because we weren't tracking it. But there you have a side-by-side comparison by subject area of the range of class sizes in that content area, as well as the overall average number of students in that content area in a classroom. So we shared this information um, back in the fall when we uh, discussed the um, results of MCAS and our accountability uh, ratings for um, each of our schools. And we continue to make progress, particularly at Turkey Hill Elementary, moving the needle there. But in every single school, we are uh, making substantial progress towards targets. We gave you some um, highlights of um, data points for the high school in terms of national ranking, um, ranking number thirteen uh, in the Worcester Metro area. Again, you've seen this information before, the, these are the results of the spring twenty-twenty-four MCAS uh, test. Uh, you've seen this exact slide in the uh, presentation that we did uh, back in the fall. So local assessments are important. We've never just relied on MCAS results uh, to make decisions. So the district is currently utilizing a variety of assessments, including I Ready for Reading and Math, the DIBELS assessment, um, the forefront universal screener for number sense, and the curriculum module assessments. And we've continued to administer these benchmarks in September, January, and late May or early June. Um, we did make the adjustment this year that we were not going to administer the benchmark in eighth grade three times. We um, are pushing the January assessment for eighth grade out into February. And then that will be the, the last assessment for them. And we'll give you those uh, progress updates as those assessments are done. You can see that we've had some pretty strong and steady performance um, in the realm of AP tests. This is a quick summary of where we are as of last spring with our I Ready Reading and Math assessments by grade up through grade eight. This is also data that we've provided in the past. This slide shows the number of students that currently are uh, on IEPs in each of our schools. And you have a look um, back to the numbers back through FY twenty-two.
Can you go back to that slide just a moment? Okay, thank you.
This is uh, some data relative to the number of evaluations for special education. It's our school psychologists that administer um, these assessments. And special ed teachers too, but um, there are, there are components that um, we rely heavily on the school uh, psychologists to administer. Data on the number of students currently on uh, five oh four plans, this, this number is as of October first. McKinney-Vento data, this is um, the number of homeless students in the district. Uh, the numbers for FY twenty-five are as of January second, but those numbers shift. Sometimes they go up, sometimes they go down.
So for those numbers for previous years, are those individuals that were captured at some point during the year? Or are they particular, are they specific snapshot in time during that year?
That would have been the total number of kiddos that were identified and uh, served.
Okay, and so that the FY twenty-five number is a cumulative number?
The FY twenty-five number is a reflection of the number of kiddos up to January second.
Cumulative, like, so one kid didn't fall off, another kid came on, the number is one.
Right.
In that case, it would have been two, but in fact, the number is one, okay.
And we only have this going back to FY twenty-three?
Yep.
It's encouraging that it's going down. It's only three years, so.
Discouraging anybody on that.
I, it's awful, it's, yeah, and it's hard to call a trend from three years.
Yeah.
We have been giving you data on our behavioral health support team. That's our referral process uh, for students um, that may need uh, some additional intervention in the realm of behavioral health. And this is the caseload, I believe for tier two, I can't see, is it tier two? Tier two supports?
Yes.
Um, the caseloads for um, various behavioral health staff across the district.
So we've only got a two-year trend there, but suffice to say, we've had a steady incline there.
This would be the caseload um, for students on tier three, is that the slide up there?
Yes.
Tier three.
Okay, so it's hard to get a total picture when you're separating these.
We'll, we'll see that.
Okay.
This is the number of kiddos that are receiving both tier-two supports, which could be a group, uh, as well as tier-three, which would be individual counseling. And then you can see numbers here for, the first number of the pair was the number for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. The second number in the pair is for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Tier one is all of the kids, that's our SEL curriculum, foster wellness. The tier-two kiddos are largely in groups, and tier-three uh, would be um, one-on-one. These are the caseloads for uh, board-certified behavior analysts, our BCBA's. You'll notice that there's an asterisk uh, in FY twenty-five at the primary school and the Turkey Hill Elementary. Um, that's because we have been unable to fill the open BCBA position. So we have contracted service to support more critical need. So those numbers are not truly reflective of what those numbers likely would be if we had a full-time BCBA on staff.
The positions, are we still, is it still posted?
We've posted several times, the hard part is, is that uh, if we don't find somebody, we have to, we have to be able to get contracted service and we need to make a commitment for some time and we need to line it up so that it's in place. So we have posted a couple of times this year, we posted in hopes of getting somebody for the second half of the year. No luck.
Okay.
These numbers are for mental health crisis or um, hospitalizations, particularly the uh, the numbers there, uh, the hospitalizations requiring tutoring services. There are notes there uh, that indicate uh, trends at, at this point of the year compared to previous years. These are numbers that everybody is familiar with, we give reports every season. This outlines the uh, percent participation of high school students participating in athletic programs each season. And as you can see, we have strong participation in our programs. Okay, so earlier on this school year, um, I asked the committee for some guidance around, you know, what to focus on as we started to think about budget for FY twenty-six. And you indicated at that time, we're still sort of in sync with how we felt last year through the budget cycle. So we maintain the same priorities for this budget cycle. So every August, the district leadership team uh, participates in the summits. We uh, also review the strategy for continuous improvement. We revise the strategy action plans as needed. This uh, meeting time as a leadership team helps the principals align their school improvement plan goals. align their school improvement plan goals with the bigger district picture, as well as we develop evaluation goals that I've brought forward for the last couple of years that are district-wide, that could be adopted by any educator in the district. In October and early November, our department heads and building principals start building their budget requests. And we held meetings in December to go over those budget requests. Again, we're looking at projected 12% increase to health insurance. We have increases that come with contract agreements. We went over the expense lines in particular to make sure that we were capturing everything. In February, we'll have a real proposed budget for you. We should have some inkling, I think even by early February, the town manager might have some indication. Usually before the final number for health insurance comes out, they adjust the range a little. So we might get a little insight prior to the February 5th school committee meeting, which would be helpful. But we will definitely have definite numbers for the health insurance in February. Typically in February and honestly, early March, because we don't usually present to the finance committee as early as we are this year. We have included the budget Q and A sessions in the agenda. So it is a little bit like a mini-budget public hearing. We can certainly do that for both meetings in February. And then by March, I'll be providing you with a recommended budget because at that point, we will know what we need to know. And again, the finance committee presentation is on March 6th. Just a reminder, last year, there was an override, but we did lose positions. We had said for three years that when the ESOMONEY's sunset, we recognized that positions equal to that funding would have to be cut. And we cut 10. Okay, it's a really big number. It's a really big number. But let me walk you through in the next handful of slides, what is included here. So the total budget for FY25 is in the red. The top number, $24,851,494, was the override budget. And then we requested and were granted the additional Chapter 70 monies at town meeting in November. So our total FY25 budget is that number in the red. And the percentages that you see there are based on that number. Okay, so what's in this budget that's like given us that big jump? This budget includes all of the increases that came as part of all of our contracts. Step increases, longevity, degree advancement, the COLAs that were part of any settled contracts. It includes the 12% increase for health insurance. It includes transportation. Now usually, we give you a number that includes general education. That's DBUS, rolling 11 buses, picking kids up and delivering them to and from school. Special education, you can see that that percentage jumped up. That's because we added three additional vans for next year based on projected students that we will be picking up. So it's not just that Vanpool increased their rates. There are three additional vans that are being required that are part of that increase number, as well as athletics. So normally, we fund a line for athletics transportation. The last several years, it's been funded at $40,000. We've had the conversation that our revolving account can't support everything that it has been supporting. So if we move to more fully fund the transportation costs, we're going to be adding slightly more than $100,000 to that line. So that is in this budget. Doesn't mean it's going to stay there. It depends on discussions and decisions that the committee makes. This budget also includes a projected 3.42% increase in out-of-district tuition. It projects some increase for utility costs. It also includes all the stipends that are part of the LEA contract. Some of them are new in the contract, like MEAS roles or curriculum leadership roles. Some of them existed prior and might have been offset with grants, like the web master stipends as an example. And previously, different activities, the advisors for different clubs, those had been fully funded out of the student activities revolving account. All of them are in this budget so that everybody understands how much all of that costs. Again, that does not mean that this number stays this number. We have some decisions to make. All of the coaches were moved into the budget again because the athletic revolving account cannot continue to support all of the coaches. Now, if we do something different with fees, we might be able to apply some monies from the revolving account to reduce the number that we're putting into the local budget. It also includes the cost of working with Gilfoil, which is a public relations company, for website hosting. We could move away from the GoDaddy platform, the Google platform, to something that is a little bit more secure. And they would be responsible for monitoring to make sure that the website is meeting ADA compliance. Again, that's something that we can talk about. Doesn't have to stay in the budget. But I wanted you to know that that is something new that we did put in. Okay. We are currently entering into negotiations with the paraprofessionals. And there are some contracts that don't fall into a bargaining unit that are up for renewal effective July 1, including a contract for a new superintendent. And we have not yet hired a facility director. So there is some money in the salary reserve to give us a little flexibility to land a more highly qualified facility director than what we budgeted for if that candidate appears to us. It also affords the school committee some flexibility in negotiating the superintendent contract. Okay, so the state FY26 budget hasn't been set. We know that that doesn't happen until oftentimes later into the summer months. It's not updated to reflect the governor's budget that was released today. Circuit breaker, again, that's not a definite known number until the end of FY25. However, we're expecting that that value will cover about 75% of the costs. There's also a possible increase for out-of-district tuition, out-of-district transportation. But that's not known at this time. Federal and state grants, we don't typically know what our allocations are for those grants until late July, early August. But we are seeing indications that we should be expecting something along the lines of level funding. So we'll see. So in last year's budget and in previous year's budget, we have funded or partially funded some positions with some title grant monies. None of the title grant monies have been applied yet to any of the positions in the budget because we have some decisions to make around cuts. And then once we figure that piece out, we can then apply what we anticipate is a reasonable, safe estimate of what we might be able to apply to appropriate staff. We can't apply Title I to the gym teacher. It has to align with the Title I criteria. So again, this is a big number, but this is what it would cost. There are offsets from our special ed grants included in here, paying partially the paraprofessional lines. But that's the only grant offset that's included. So if we absorb some of the cost for athletics, we have our 12% increase for health insurance. We have slightly more than a 7% increase in our transportation for next year. We have, again, new stipends that are part of the LEA contract that are not student activities related. So those will have to be budgeted. In prior years, when the school choice revolving account was a little more robust, we were able to, you know, fund stipends like that through that revolving account. We can't count on that. So I want to be clear for the public. We are not asking for a $28.7 million budget. We are not. What I'm saying is, if we fund everything that we've got going on right now without access to funds that we used to use to offset some of these costs, this is what it would cost. Minus a little bit, because when we apply some Title I, a little bit will come down. But it's not coming down like $2 million. So again, it's a big number. We're not asking for $28 million. But we need some guidance and direction as we really start to nail down an actual budget that we would bring forward. What do we want to do about fees mainly? And you'll have to make a decision too on, are we enrolling in the school choice program for next year? Do we want to maintain numbers similar to the last four years, which is a really relatively small number and only in the ninth grade? Because that will bring some revenue into the choice revolving account. There's a plus and minus to that decision. And just because we open five or 10 seats, doesn't mean we fill them. We have some big decisions to make.
Are you ready for questions?
Questions is the next slide.
Mr. Stoll and Greenie.
So I have three questions. The first question is, what legal obligation do we have to fund transportation for athletics?
None.
Okay. What percentage of the 12% for increase in health insurance do you think is likely, given that we were told 10% last year and it came in at 6%?
So through the LEA, listening to MTA, we're thinking that 12% might actually be the bottom. Like it's not going to go much lower than the 12%. We might actually be looking at 12%.
Just to add to my three questions that follow. Could we do the budget? And we talked about this as a school committee before, we decided not to do it this way. But to do the budget and have like a breakout where the health insurance costs are just, it's not negotiated. Yeah, just say like, here's our cost, here's the health insurance cost that everybody in the town gets. So you can see that our increase is not so much because of, you know, whatever. It's mainly just health insurance. And then the last question I had was about the, if you have the total amount for busing, is there, there's no other, there was no other bids, right? None?
None.
And so we're basically stuck with that? There's nothing else we can do?
So the actual bid came in, you were not at the meeting that was presented. The actual bid came in at a 10% increase for next year. And Dr. Gilson worked with DBUS to take the total increase in their bid over three years and distribute it differently. So that's why the transportation is only 7.6. It's down from what they proposed as 10. Yeah, it's going to be closer to more consistent sevens across the board, up or down a little. But there's no here that we're going to take a big hit.
And D is the company that provides all of our busing, special education or otherwise?
No, special education is through Vanpool.
Okay. Okay.
Other members? Ms. Ashenbaum?
I'm going to circle back to what Tony said about presentation with the health insurance. Because suppose, wishful thinking, the town manager says 3% to us. Well, that's all gone in our health insurance. If he says 3% to the police, they get 3%. So I think making that presentation that way is very important. I wish I had other words of wisdom.
Yeah. So just so that you know, based on enrollment as of January, health insurance with a 12% increase would be a little more than 3.6. would be a little more than three point seven million in the health insurance line of the budget.
To add on the, the state contribution as well, discussion, I had mentioned that this year, the governor had proposed a seventy-five dollar per pupil minimum increase. Calculating the numbers based off of the governor's today numbers, it comes in around ninety-nine dollars per student of Lunenburg increase.
I, I just noticed something on that, though. Because the DESI numbers were based on enrollment of sixteen thirty-three, and that's not the number that was up on the board earlier.
So I, yeah, I use the both fifteen hundred numbers from.
Yeah, but, but will DESI bring the number down because we don't have sixteen thirty-three is my question.
No, it's based on.
It's best, based on other things.
Based on the, I wanna say it's like, it's based on whatever the enrollment is the year in arrears. But the other thing that I think you have to take into account is the school choice receiving or sending, like there, there's a, that, those numbers are affected by the chapter.
By chapter seven?
Yeah, and I can't remember which one it is. I think it's receiving.
But I don't think it's gonna move too much.
It's not gonna move.
You don't think it'll move.
Yeah, I think it's based on some, I mean, historically, whatever the enrollment is that drives the but, the governor's number is what it is come the end of the budget cycle. They're gonna adjust based on per student, like a per student contribution and whatever else they do, but then the enrollment number is the enrollment number.
I'll add those numbers to our resolutions too.
It might actually be the, it might be the number of kiddos from Lunenburg at Monty Tech.
Oh, that's true.
Lunenburg has to pay.
No, that, that is not included.
We'll double check.
Yeah, it, it's a.
The chapter seventy receiving includes Monty Tech, kids at Monty Tech. The chapter seven, because we have to share our chapter seventy money with Monty Tech.
But no, we actually don't. Monty Tech, Monty Tech gets chapter seventy.
Do they?
I believe.
Let's look into it. We'll have to look into it.
Ms. Pizowski?
So the governor's budget doesn't really, isn't really gonna be a great help to us this year?
It is not gonna keep up with inflation.
No, it's roughly one point five percent, one point seven, something like that.
It's around one point seven percent is what the rough computation was.
Nice to know she heard us.
Well, but typically, by the time it gets to conference between the House and the Senate, the number rises.
The problem is we expect more from the governor, was the idea was.
Yeah, we were hoping that.
A higher bottom would have been nice.
I wasn't expecting more.
Ms. Pizowski, anything on the other budget?
So I was, it's hard for me to contextualize these numbers without more data. Like, I keep going back to last year's budget sheets and trying to figure out and make inferences. So I was kinda hoping for more information. Will we have more info at our next meet?
You'll have more info before your next meeting.
Well, not the next, our next meeting's on the twenty-ninth, because, or, I think we're adding.
Special meeting, that's a special meeting.
Not the special meeting, but the, the meeting in two weeks, our next regular meeting.
Yep, you'll have.
Okay.
Troy Rayfist?
Cause it's really hard to make inferences about the data without
Yeah, without the.
more data. But thank you for putting this together, I appreciate it. I was surprised that the non-personnel costs were such a driver.
The other thing is, when we were, and I, I just need to emphasize this. When we were looking at expense lines in the budget, at the building level, department level, we were looking to make sure that we had a number in the line that could support the purchase of that service or material. Because we're not going to have any safety net in the form of revolving accounts that if something comes in with an increase that we weren't expecting, we need to be able to pay the bills. So you, and I said this last year, we, we cut what we brought to you the very first time, which ultimately ended up being the budget that was voted, the override budget, all of those expense lines. The principals brought those in last November, cut already because they were trying to make cuts elsewhere to keep staff. The lines last year, FY twenty-five, current year, not sustainable. Not sustainable.
Yeah.
We, we have to, if you, if we want to be able to pay the bills and buy the materials that are necessary for teachers in the classroom, the expense lines have to be adequate to pay those bills and make those purchases.
It might be, and I hate to have to ask this, and I hate that I'm up here asking this, it might be helpful at some point if we had a primer on what we are legally required to provide as a school system and what we're not. Like, are we, like Tony's question about busing for sports? Are we legally required to offer sports?
No.
Um, cause I'm looking here at the athletics that went up two hundred and fifty-four percent. But I also need to know the cost, which I know we went over last week, but like, I need, I need to see it all laid out.
Well, it's difficult to really put a number on it. As an example, earlier this evening, we talked about competency determination. That's a legal requirement. What's the price tag we're putting on that? The kids have to take those classes.
No, I meant.
Right? We have to have graduation requirements, we have them.
Yeah.
What's the price tag we're gonna put on that?
Yeah.
I think the example would be like, can you just get rid of the physical education?
Right. So, you know, largely what we do with special ed largely is legally required.
Yeah, like special ed, like the Vanpool.
Are we required to have a social worker? No. Right?
Yeah, so it.
Like, you're required to have a special ed director.
Well, I think there's also contractual obligations to either certain.
Yeah.
Which limits.
To ask because it's.
Population limits.
I hate that we're back up here doing this, but we need to know what legally is required.
What's on the chopping block, what's.
What are the nice to haves and what are the?
Well, I think at this point, honestly, we're at the point. Class sizes under twenty-five, that was nice to have. But I don't think we can move forward with class sizes under twenty-five. We can be more selective about where we push that number up. But across the board, we're looking at a big number here. We, you can't make significant enough cuts to the expense lines. We just talked about that. So the only place that we have to make cuts is in personnel.
Ms. Skull and Brini?
Laura, when we started the budget task force thing, I had the exact same thought. Like, what are the nice to haves and where, and everyone got so mad that we didn't even do that. Like, we just completely abandoned that plan. So I, I think that we should try again here. But I can tell you that like, when you tell people there's no constitutional legal obligation to have a police department, everybody loses their mind. When you say there's no constitutional legal department, legal requirement to have a fire department, everybody loses their mind.
Oh, I remember, yep.
And my guess is.
I do remember when you said there was no legal obligation to pay roads.
Yeah, you don't have to do that, do whatever you want.
Just go to Pittsburgh.
Right. If, if we say that to the town about athletics, I'm, I'm imagining.
Also, cause it's not what's best for the kids.
Right, like I imagine we'll just have a firestorm. But like, I think at some point, we've gotta recognize that.
We have to focus on what we are legally required to provide because we're at the point where we are only able to provide what we are legally required.
I don't think that's where we start. I think, I think these are important data points. But if, if you, if you come at it purely from that direction, if you think your school choice numbers are imbalanced right now, get ready, you know? And then, hey, maybe that solves our Singleton's problem, I don't know. But, but we, we are going to see kids leave because we have to offer a program that wants, that, that, that keeps the families and the kids wanting to be here. And, and I mean, that, that's the reality of the situation. And, you know, I, like, here's the reality. We are in the situation we're in because our legislators are not taking care of us. And I know people don't wanna hear that, but that is the nature of the beast. I was on TV last week, I did that flap, uh, 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 TV show with a Lemonster school committee member and, you know, a, a resident of Lemonster and a Lemonster, and a resident of Pittsburgh. And they, they basically described the situation as, yeah, I mean, our contract negotiations are tough, but from a budgetary situation, we are not feeling the pain that Lunenburg, North Middlesex, right? The, the, the districts that are made up of smaller communities are feeling. Why is that? Because the state is funneling all the money into those communities. Well, what does that mean for us? Well, it means that Lemonster and Pittsburgh, despite their challenges, do run a lot of opportunities and, and cool programs that we are unable to afford in Lunenburg, right? And, and they have school choice seats available as well. So like, these are things that, I, I don't, I don't think we can come at this from a, okay, what, you know, let's draw the line on what's, what's legal.
So what do we come at?
Well, I, I agree that you don't come at it that way, but I think it's good to have the list on the side.
The data point is important, yeah.
I, I think you need to have that. I wouldn't suggest that we start and say, well, we're only required to do this, that's what we're doing.
No, that's not part of, that's part of the school system.
I think we definitely need to know what those things are. And I think as we always have, we're gonna strive to do the best we can to balance everything. And not everybody's gonna be happy. And I wish we weren't in this mess again.
You gotta prioritize the cuts. On the other side, I wanted to add was that we did the fees tonight for preschool. We should be looking at all the other fees too. So we get the student activities, the athletic fees, facilities, rental fees. We should be doing this on an annual basis and helping out the budget that way.
And just a reminder, the pre-K tuition that you voted this evening goes to the town general fund.
Yeah, yeah.
It, it doesn't come into a revolving account that, that we.
So why'd we raise the fees? Why'd we raise the fees?
I think we have to play nice.
I also think that's.
I think it's reasonable.
It's not, we, we should be taking the same approach across the board. And, and adding conversations about fees relative to ability to pay and what people get for them and those kinds of things.
Put it to a vote for.
But I think it's, I, I think the process needs to be more broad. I have one other thought, and I, I think you're thinking of it this way, but I, I just wanna make sure that there are, there are multiple ways to skin a cat sometimes when it comes to requirements and frameworks and standards, right? Case in point, the conversation we had, and I don't wanna beat a dead horse too hard around physical education frameworks and standards. But a lot of that content, I would imagine we can cover outside of the gym class. And, and I, you know, like, and I'm not suggesting that we do that and take that course, although I would also leave it on the, you know, things we could consider. But like, you know, are there, are there other ways to skin a cat that we just haven't thought of? And, and, you know, not to bring up a sore subject that, you know, frankly, I'm on the other side of, but we get a lot of pushback around things like IT, facilities, those kinds of things. And I, I think that there is a vast op, you know, benefit to doing it the way we do it. However, all of these things are costly. And, and they've all trended over the last several years well above our two and a half percent targeted budgets from the town. You know, a, 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 as a budgeting tactic, should we be going back and saying, okay, take it? You know, like, let that be somebody else's problem and we'll focus on program.
So Michael Ray Jeffries actually did discuss at the, I think it was the select board meeting the other day, about the facilities position and how potentially there could be some facilities of the school department that could go to the facilities of the town. And we could have a smaller position but still have a facilities director position running what we want that we don't care if the town wants to do the other facility.
Yeah, and again, I'm very, I'm unconvinced that there's any money to be saved here. I just think it's a matter of moving money from one pocket to the other. But as a, as a, you know, back to, okay, our numbers are, you know, our health insurance is fully burdened. Okay, well, you take it and we'll focus on, on program, right?
In regards to that, we have been discussing, like, the house doctor outsourcing part of that. If we're gonna outsource it, why not outsource it to someone in town who we know and like and trust and is very capable and competent at their job and is already aware of the way the town works and the town buildings?
Anything else on the budget?
Ouch.
Dr. Brini?
Any thoughts or guidance?
Lottery tickets.
I think we gave some good feedback, I think that it's another stepping stone.
I, I think the, going back to the list from last year and seeing if that list is still valid. You know, what, what circumstances may have changed to make one thing or another more, more vulnerable to be cut or not? You know, but I, I think that's the starting place. And, and I think looking at those fees, that needs to be, you know, we need to be able to see, if the fees go up the way they were proposed, what does that do to that number? It's not gonna wipe it out, that's for sure. But it, it'll budge something. So I think having that information would be helpful and a good start for conversation.
Yeah, I, just from an editorial standpoint, I, I think that, I understand the philosophy that you took in terms of extracting the costs associated with revolving accounts. On the other hand, those revolving accounts aren't going anywhere, they're still gonna be there. There's still money going into them. And we have a proposal right now for a seventy-five dollar a sport increase that, you know, I'll talk about in committee reports, but we're gonna do some, get some community feedback on that over the course of the next week or two. I, I'm hard pressed to go to anybody and say our transportation costs for athletics are going up two hundred and forty-seven percent because they're not, right? So I think we have to be careful about showing in a simple, transparent way what are costs, what are actually happening with our costs? Why we're asking for more of a contribution from parents? And if we don't do that, what are the ramifications, right? And, and I, I understand your presentation tonight wasn't meant to illustrate that. But I do think that relative to all fees, not just athletic fees, we do have a need to, to be able to demonstrate.
All right, moving on. Next is a discussion on school choice.
It's been helpful because I typically bring a recommendation to the first meeting in February around school choice. I know that last May, I came back and revisited the conversation because we had a June first deadline to submit to the state what our participation would be. And we looked at other grade levels. And at the time, not knowing what the future was gonna be with the budget this year, we took a pass on changing anything. Am I still just looking at a, a number to recommend for ninth grade?
Was there any data from last year that you could share about the number of students we got from school choice?
I think at one point, the four out of the five that we opened for ninth grade were filled.
So it's not like people are knocking on the door saying we all want to.
Like I said to you late last spring, the place where people are knocking on the door, they wanna get in in the elementary grades.
I hear, I've heard your point about the revolving funds and school choice. I'm still very nervous about. I'm still very nervous about opening up to school choice if we're going to be increasing class sizes.
I hear you, but at the same time, if we don't continue to participate even with a small number, the revenues coming in are going to further drop off. And eventually, that revolving account is going to be done.
Mr. Scoll, bring it.
So I don't know the answer to this, so I'm asking you, Dr. Burnham, you, Brian, and you, Carol. What is the marginal difficulty in adding, going from twenty-five to twenty-six versus going from like ten to eleven for a student or whatever? If we're already, so, so that's the first question. If we're already expanding class sizes to meet the budget, is adding one kid per class on top of that gonna make a difference? I mean, does it make a huge difference?
Not one child. I mean, you, you're already, if you're talking, I spent my life in first grade at the end, okay? So if you're talking the difference between twenty-five first graders and twenty-six first graders, that's not huge. The difference between eighteen first graders and twenty-five first graders, that's huge.
Okay. So if in the budget, we're proposing like a one or two increase and we add one more.
I'd be okay with that.
Okay, then I think that we should open up school choice. We need every stream of revenue possible. We're already adding kids, the marginal penalty for adding one more kid is not, doesn't seem to be that high, so we should just do it.
I think we've had this discussion in prior years too, that I, I'm always open to school choice. And from the discussions, I'm very hesitant to open up school choice for the elementary level. Because from what you had said, it's, they stay with you the whole time and you're only getting that half of the, or that smaller portion of the amount.
I'd rather do it in the elementary levels because they stay with us the whole time. I think there are teachers here who would school choice their students in. So it would be a benefit to student, to teachers, wouldn't it?
You could have a lot of North Middlesex kids coming here too.
Okay.
Yeah, definitely.
And that's okay. I mean, they would come in and they'd stick with us and that would be the revenue for the next twelve years and.
Just keep in mind, our per pupil cost and the revenue aren't even close, right?
I know, they're very different, which is why.
That's true.
You're, you're making a donation to a neighboring town when you do this, right?
Well, yes and no, because if you go from eighteen kids in a first grade to twenty-five, your per pupil cost, like, of in that classroom will go down. Because the teacher now is doing twenty-five kids, not eighteen.
You're not hiring another teacher.
It's not gonna be fifty-five hundred dollars.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying that, but I am saying that, you know, the, you, you can't figure you've got, that that kid coming in is gonna cost you your whole per pupil, per kid. I don't think they will.
I, I'm not, I'm not quite sure if I'll follow your.
We're also not busting them. We don't pay to bust.
You don't pay to bust them.
We don't pay to bust them.
Teachers there anyways, you will have an extra phone book.
I, I guess where, where I'm hung up is Tony's question around the, the marginal effect of adding another kid in that classroom on achievement, learning, attention from the teacher, that kind of thing.
Effects.
And, and the tipping point where you can't, we are left with not being able to cut a position or having to add a position because we've made a, we, we've put something over a tipping point, right? And we're, and a future school committee will wanna draw a line and say, no, we're investing in education and we want twenty kids in a class. And now we've got space concerns and, uh, you know, an imbalance in our per pupil investment where we are making a substantial donation to our, to our neighboring town, right?
Once they're here, they're here.
Yes.
Which is, I think, fair. I mean, I'm not gonna argue about that. If you tell a kid you can go to elementary school here, you can. Say the next year you can. Would it be a benefit for teachers to say?
I think, you mean for teachers to have the opportunity to choice their kids in here?
Yes.
I think that there are some. I don't, I don't have any hard data on that.
If there's, if there's more students that apply for the number of spots, how would that work?
Watering.
Yeah, so there's no guarantee that a teacher.
So a teacher doesn't.
If you have fifty North Middlesex kids coming here.
We can't write a rule such that we're not opening slots or we're giving teachers a.
That's what I was worried about too.
Are we trying to go like a, what?
And as Dr. Burnham said, there are people who wanna come here.
They're closing two schools.
Well, there's already, they're closing schools and there's already kids that wanna come here for elementary school, but they're going off of it.
I would be open to the, a few slots at the elementary level, just start, I, I don't know, I would want to see a proposal. And it would really depend on what happened with budget cuts, but we don't have to decide until after.
No, it's just a discussion.
We don't have to decide until after we know what's gonna happen.
Yeah, I, I can delay, you don't have to bring school choice at the next meeting. Typically, that's the meeting that it comes in. We can wait and see what happens with the budget, how deep the cuts are. And then come back and make a decision because we have to get that into the state by June first.
That would be my preference.
So we have time, I can push out school choice.
That definitely.
Yeah, that would absolutely be my preference because I think.
By the way, does anybody know what the, the teachers think? Like, if they're the ones that are gonna have to do the extra work for the extra kids, like, do we know what they want?
Yes, I can tell you right now.
Which is, no?
Yeah, an increased class size is not, not a good idea.
They would like a decrease to their class size.
Are there teachers who enjoy larger classes?
No, there's no way anybody enjoys.
Is there any teacher?
Well, give me forty days.
It's difficult when you're the teacher of a class of five and then there are two kids out sick. And now you have a class of three and you plan for a discussion on a text that you were reading. A too small a number can, can be a problem.
Can also be a problem.
Depends on the kids too, populations.
That's a problem I'd like to have.
I've had great classes of twenty-five, but I've had awful classes of fifteen. You're like, you just don't, you don't know.
Well, we had budget cuts in Lancaster and they had classes of forty. I will tell you, that does not work. And that was in the nineteen nineties.
Oh my gosh.
My first grade class had forty-one.
Yeah, that wasn't good, Tony.
Oh, it's a turn down. Ah, look at that.
I feel like that's what it was.
All right, we'll continue on to the.
All these questions about education, they were taught you in the first grade.
All right, on the agenda, next item is old business, a discussion on recommendations on competency determination.
And you heard that already this evening as part of the program of studies because they would need to incorporate that information into the program of studies.
All right, next item on the agenda, old business search committee, so if we can go really quick before Peter gets back and finishes this, that would be great.
All in favor?
All right, so I got a long list so we don't forget anything, but, um, so, uh, for the search committee, I, I sent Liz and Dr. Burnham an email to send out. So that did go out to the parents, would you say? Does that, that go to the parents population?
It went out to parents and staff.
Parents and staff. Okay, and.
I think it went out to parents and staff.
I did post it on Facebook, on the, uh, school committee page as well as the school community page. And there was also a, a lot of people who shared it and the Lunenburg schools shared it as well. Uh, the library said they would post it. Um, I also reached out to the senior center. And the ledger is gonna post it, uh, but they do charge fifty dollars, so I put that in there. So I don't know how that works, if we have to approve that payment?
I don't think that you have to approve the payment. I think you just need to decide, do you wanna post it? Knowing what the cost is and then we'll take it out of the advertisement line of the budget.
So we should discuss that as well.
Why don't I get posted? Cause we need them back by.
Friday. Then it'll get posted on the Friday ledger or the.
Well, you have to have it in by Tuesday.
By Tuesday to have it in the Friday.
So I already had it in.
Oh.
That was the decision's made.
Well, I submitted that, maybe I could pull it back and, or we could just not pay that, that's fine too, but.
I'm buying, I'm paying on my pocket or whatever.
In that case, motion to put it in the Lunenburg ledger.
Oh, well, let's just have a discussion on it.
I think it's fine.
It's fine, it's fine. Okay, it's fine. I just wanted to make sure we weren't gonna post a notice for something that already has.
Their, their print deadline, I believe, is new on Wednesday.
Yeah, I had submitted like last Friday.
Tuesday.
I, I just didn't wanna.
We're, me and Carol had discussed like trying to get it out there so people knew about it and we get a good diverse population.
That is a good way.
Um, I did post in the superintendent's search folder to the applicants, both the internal applicants for the superintendent position so far and then also the, uh, superintendent screening committee, um, people who had submitted a letter so far. So those are just the people who have submitted a letter. I had had several people either call, email saying they were interested, but they haven't submitted their letter yet. So we have, I think, six so far, um, for the ten spots plus myself and Carol. But I expect to get a lot more within the week. I think the, the hope is that we get a, a good diverse, uh, pool of applicants and it's not like, say, ten parents who are all dads of primary school students, like we're trying to get a good diverse group.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
We maybe post at the, at the Lunenburg Adult Activity Center, formerly known as the Eagle House?
Yeah, so that's why I, I emailed, yeah, I emailed them. So hopefully they will post that there.
I'm trying to think of a more, like, more places to get more people who are just parents, which is.
Yeah, I think the ledger, the ledger will help and the library and the senior center.
I saw you, yeah, all over Facebook.
And then Facebook, yeah, Facebook and other places besides. So one concern I had was, we, so do we do have a meeting on, planned on the twenty-ninth? We could make that also more of a, a superintendent workshop too, where we talk about, like, uh, Peter had mentioned in the, in his, uh, public comment too, but, and we could talk about uh, scheduling listening sessions and our expectations and kind of really workshop on the twenty-ninth. Uh, but also we'd have to have that meeting be a vote for those applicants if we have more than ten applicants for the committee. Uh, the concern that I have is I am hesitant to have a discussion about individual applicants. I'd prefer not to have those in a public meeting and try to keep those applicants.
So a workshop might be a good idea?
I think a workshop would be good. What I was thinking too is, um, similar to how the superintendent evaluation is done by usually the chair and the vice chair, with that feedback from the members and kind of compiling it. I was thinking potentially something like that where Carol and I could get feedback from you three.
That eventually becomes public though.
What's that?
That eventually becomes public.
The, yes, well, I think the list will eventually, I don't know if we want the, not the individual ones.
I don't think that you compile it as a subcommittee, you'd have to compile it as a chair. Just one additional rub here.
I'm just trying to think creatively how, not how we don't have to have conversations about individual people.
With the town manager's search.
We were a committee and we did it as a.
Yeah, but how did you get the committee people? How did you get the committee people?
It's driven by charter. We were, we were a committee driven by charter.
Probably did last time too.
The, so just an additional route for scheduling, we have to have a capital planning committee meeting on the twenty-ninth. So, uh, it has to do with Carter's contract and getting certain things done before the end of the month so they can be part of the capital plan. I, I was planning to post that tomorrow, but for seven thirty PM, that'll just be a Zoom meeting for capital planning. So if we, if, if we're doing a workshop, we would have to get it, I would have to be out of there by seven thirty, I guess is the. So whatever that's worth for me.
Yeah, I don't know what time we're gonna start.
We can do, next Wednesday's meeting earlier, do we?
Yeah, we could.
We can do it earlier.
Yeah, I mean, I'm also limited there too, so.
But the other thought too, me and Carol had discussed even before, getting feedback from you, was even us looking over the applicants and then bringing a motion to the meeting versus having again a discussion about those applicants? We could potentially just bring a motion of who we'd recommend for the committee.
That still makes me nervous, open meeting law wise.
The two of you can't have a discussion.
We can have a discussion.
Two.
Two can.
No, cause the two of you are on the.
No, they can.
Are you the search.
They can do it without us.
That's okay?
The two of you can have a discussion about applicants. What you can't do is take our feedback individually.
Okay.
And consider that.
We do some policy subcommittee all the time, it's the two of us.
Right, so we can do that and, and then, we could give them all the applicant, well, you, they have all the applicants' information.
Yeah.
And then if they disagree with what we came up with, they vote down.
Yeah, you could, you, the two of you can bring forth a recommendation.
That's, I think, what I wanna do.
Okay.
Just to.
Yeah, because you don't wanna talk personalities in public.
Yeah, that's what I don't wanna do.
I, I don't want people.
I would, I would prefer if the two of you would bring forth a recommendation that you would put into a document prior to our meeting that says, here's what we recommend, right? And then we know coming into the meeting.
That's the recommendation?
This is the recommendation. Now, if I have a serious problem with one of the candidates.
Then it comes out.
I can bring it up, right? But, and then it's unfortunate and it's uncomfortable and, but like, I think that's the, probably the right way to do it.
Yeah, that way it minimize, at least it minimizes the amount of putting names out there. I mean, the names are gonna get there, I just don't wanna get the, in the butt of our names.
Especially because it's, you know, volunteers.
They are, and I appreciate the volunteers.
I love everybody who voluntarily is.
It would be great if it's a perfect ten out of ten, but I'm guessing it's gonna be more than ten because of.
I also think though, I mean, i- if you were to do this in a really efficient way and it's, just becomes a procedural thing. And we would also perhaps bring forward at that meeting, like we each prepare or maybe even send you a document, like, this is what we're looking for, criteria, some kind of narrative around.
The type of person you would like to have.
Like, maybe we could skip ahead a lot of, you know, unnecessary pontificating and horse trading around a table, around criteria that is more speculative than anything because we, we won't be looking at actual candidates at that point. It's, it's really intended to drive the deliberation process of the, of the screening committee.
Okay.
Thank you, that helps. And I think, again, on the twenty-ninth, I think we could discuss listening sessions and try to plan those out around our schedules. And then try to reserve a room, maybe potentially this room to have a listening session that fits with each of our individual schedules and we can either double up or even do it ourselves.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to go to as many as I can, cause I'd like to hear what, what people have to say, cause I really, we don't get to do that often, especially with the teachers and hear where they'd like to go as far as direction. And I think we should do that as soon as we can, um, because I think that will drive what we're looking for. Um, and the task of the search committee for what they're tasked with finding as far as a superintendent.
So I think on the twenty-ninth too, like Peter had said, kinda give the, the screening committee some guidance on what we're looking for.
Shoot, so what I would suggest is we send you notes on this, not you.
Not me.
No.
And I can compile them for the twenty-ninth.
Just to, just to accelerate that conversation.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question?
And I'll email everybody before that, remind you.
Can you stick in the superintendent's search folder our strategic plan? The district's strategic plan?
Yes.
Just a copy of just that?
If you can just email me that, I can upload it.
Yeah, I, I just wanna, in the, does someone say hi, Alexa?
She does, yeah, she does.
Yeah, just so it's in the, in the superintendent folder, cause I think that should.
Mr. Scoll, bring it.
What, what notes are we sending you?
Peter, you wanna sum that one up?
What we would be looking for in a superintendent candidate.
The.
Characteristics and qualifications.
But I mean, like, aren't the qualifications, like, you have to have a certain degree and level?
Yeah, 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 but, but for example, somebody who has a extensive background in curriculum versus somebody who has an extensive background in program management or budgeting or.
Facilities.
Different, different styles.
Dr. Burnham, when, when you were hired, Dr. Burnham, you were hired, cause you, the district was looking for two goals, right? Or there were specific goals the district was looking for that aligned with kind of what your personal goals were or the things?
I don't, I don't think so.
No, I don't think so either.
I feel like somebody said.
Curriculum value.
That was me.
Wasn't it curriculum?
That I, I was interested in, but I was not on the search committee, to be honest. I don't remember having this conversation. I, but I was. I, but I was brand new on the school committee. I probably could have had that conversation, didn't even notice.
But I think honestly, you might find someone that has this vision that you didn't even think about looking for that vision, like, I love that vision, let's pick them.
You know, it, it could very well be.
And that is, you know, that is the, the reason why we have adult-thinking human beings on a screening committee to be able to identify those opportunities, right?
We also want to be able to tell, we also want to be able to tell candidates what we're about and, and if we're a good fit.
Well, that's part of the posting too.
Yeah, it's part of their research as well.
And they'll watch all these wonderful meetings that we are so thankful that PAC takes.
Oh, I know how far.
Get and have her, like two different.
So as a reminder to the public too, so this, we're starting the, the screening process and the screening search with internal candidates. Um, we had discussed potentially up to potentially six candidates that are qualified internally. Uh, we would go through that process and if there were no internal candidates that were qualified that we wanted to say hire, that we would open up an external search.
Right.
So we are, I, I did receive some feedback. I, I did respond to everybody, uh, on that email. Uh, but someone was concerned about just the worry of just looking at internal candidates and we are having the process that we're starting at internal for multiple reasons and then we're gonna look at external if we need to.
I've heard some of that feedback as well as, but yeah, I thought you responded well. Um, so I talked to Tracy Novick today at M A S C, cause I wanted to touch base about the M A S C has their superintendent search and I also had a few questions for her.
Yeah.
Um, and it's, um, I feel strongly that if we do not find an internal candidate, that we should engage their services for a superintendent search, because that's one of the main benefits of.
How much does it cost?
It's, uh, eleven thousand five hundred dollars. Which is not, if we found the right candidate and they said, I'm not taking that job for that pay, you gotta pay me.
Is it like a full nationwide search, everything?
It costs slightly more if you go nation, nationwide, but.
Advertising costs.
That, but, because of the advertising cost, but.
I mean, that strikes me as, I mean, we're, I run another board and we're doing the same thing and we have a very, very high-end search people and it's more, but it's not significantly more than that. They better be really good for that much money. Man, it's a lot of money.
Does the town manager do?
Yeah, so, so here's the background on this. They're the only show in town.
Right.
Right, so, so either, if we're gonna, if we're gonna use a, a consultant to help us here, I think it's M A S C is, the, to my limited research on this, they're kind of the only show in town. We went with Community Dynamics, I believe is the name of the firm for the town manager search. It was fifteen thousand dollars. We were actually able to use ARPA money to pay for it. And we got way more than our money's worth for that fifteen thousand dollars, just in terms of hours spent and networking and expertise. So, I, I. I, I, I have concerns about M A S C and their agenda, but I, but I, I think if we're going to, if we are go, i- if we think we need help, then we should go that route. And I, I'm, I'm, I'm very apprehensive about their agenda. Um, but I, but I don't think that there are better alternatives.
I'm not asking them to set policy, but I think that superintendents know that's, they're the matchmaking program, that's where you apply.
For me, the challenge is, I think if we don't use them, you go through the process, you might not get enough candidates or any candidates and then you're still gonna have to go use them.
Right.
And then you're wasting a lot of time, so I kind of lean towards using M A S C.
It's a lot of money, but it's also not a lot of money, when it's a one-time cost. It, it's not a lot of money, it's, it's, it's.
It feels like a lot.
It does feel like a lot, but when it come, I mean, but I, over the lifetime, compared to the salary of what we're paying, I think it's.
I also, my, my bigger, uh, bigger obstacle than the money is, they have a very clear agenda. Their trainings are geared to that agenda, their policy recommendations are geared to that agenda, and I do not share that agenda. So like, how are we gonna get a candidate that we like from people that we don't trust?
We have done that before.
We got Doctor Burnham. We all went.
Stop clock is right close to death.
We all went through the training and came through the training without that.
So, but I, I think that, look, we all have our sensitivities when it comes to policies and agendas and I, you know, we could spend the whole night talking, I could spend the whole night talking about the shortcomings of M A S C. That being said, if we want to engage somebody who has the ability to network, to get the word out to a qualified group of candidates, to share information in both directions that is as unbiased as possible, um, and it's not us doing the runaround work. Um, I, back to my earlier comment, I think that they're the only show in town. And, and are, are we going to have to be keen to things that may not align with our philosophies? Well, I mean, that's why Carol and Brian will have to represent us, you know?
I think you, we're still going through the process of interviewing the candidates, just like on the, the town manager side too, you're gonna interview them and pick which ones you like. They're really just getting the people done, getting the door.
And, and, with the consultants that we use on the town manager side, I mean, we made the decision, it was, we, that was us. We approved the posting, we told them what we were looking for, they went and actually did some, um, some sensing sessions with department heads to get additional feedback and that was really intended to inform their discussions with candidates, right? Because, yeah, I think was the case with more than half of our candidates, it wasn't a resume that came in from nowhere, it was they picked up the phone and said, hey, you're, you know, we, we know you're available or you expressed some interest in this other position that you didn't get, here's another opportunity that might be more aligned. And it was their application and letter of interest was the result of a conversation that, that the consultants had.
Sure.
And, and, by the way, that is very time-consuming work, right? And, and that's what drives whatever the cost is.
Yeah, so to wrap this up, uh, we'll meet on the twenty ninth. Do we have a time? Any, how early we wanna get started?
As early as people feel they can do.
I could start at six and I got.
All right, so why don't you do six, six P M?
Uh, I'm gonna be in, in the middle of a, like, literally the middle of a, I think, a murder trial in a faraway place. I will not be available that day. I mean, I, I might get here.
You can always send me feedback.
Send feedback.
Send me feedback before, and again, I'll, I'll remind everybody to send me that feedback as well. Uh, but we'll do six P M and then if we can get this room, that would be great. And then we'll do an agenda item of the, the vote for the committee members and then we'll just do a workshop after that, workshop, what we wanna do? Sound good?
Yeah.
All right. Moving on, next item of the agenda is old business, uh, district offices.
Okay, so, um, a few things on this topic. Um, first off, back to my superintendent's report, we did explore other options, I think after seeing what we're dealing with budget-wise. I, I think that the closer to free option of moving into some space at Turkey Hill Elementary is the thing that makes sense at this time. The town, uh, would like to know definitively that we will be moving out and when we will be moving out. My thoughts on that are, i- it's going to take a bit of time, um, and I think over the summer, I don't, I don't know that we can get it done from the last day of school to June thirtieth. Um, because all of the offices need to be packed up to be moved. I think it's gonna have to happen probably through the month of July. Those are my early thoughts on it. Um, we can come back and revisit this because I think, um, the folks on the town side would like, like to know for certain what the plan is and the timeline for it.
Peter?
So I've, through my role as capital planning committee chair, I've had a number of conversations with the interim town manager over the last several weeks and this has come up. Um, he is planning to bring forth a plan, uh, to deal with, uh, T C Passios in some capacity. It, it's not to mothball the whole building, but it is to deal with sections that would include space that we currently occupy. Um, and he had expressed concern that his plan would be perceived potentially as Carter kicking out the schools, right, to be blunt. And, and asked me to relay to, to Brian, like, you know, what is the position of the school committee was the, really the question. And, and I had shared back to Carter, look, I, I think we discussed this at some length back during the summer and had agreed that our intent is to vacate the space, but there was a lot of work to do between then and now and I, I do not feel comfortable representing the, the whole of the school committee to say definitively, yes, we're out. Um, but, but I, I, I would like to be able to sort of endorse Carter's work, right? Like, he is doing the work that needs to be done to move that thing along and maybe bring mothballs or a bulldozer to the backside of that building. So, uh, uh, my, my preference would be for us to kind of resolve sitting here on the twenty second of January, that is still our intent, right? And, and, and we kind of go that way.
So, it's a discussion, Ms. Archibald?
I think we were pretty clear that we didn't want to maintain a presence in that building into the next school year. The, the conditions in that building have deteriorated. It's not good for the kids that use that building, it's not good for our staff that uses that building. And, um, I know that there is at least one other department that uses that building that is afraid the roof is gonna come down. I mean, what, we have to have a place to go if that building becomes unusable more than it already is. So, I would a hundred percent agree that as soon as possible, and if Doctor Burnham says it would be July, that that's what we tell Carter. I, that's how I feel.
Ms. Brzusowski?
What's the cost of this? Is it still the?
I don't care.
We just have, we have some, um, plumbing-related cost, uh, that should come in under twenty thousand dollars. Um, that's just to get the room ready for the ACE program to move in. The other costs, um, some of them have been absorbed in this, um, nine-one-one upgrade because we had enough phone line drops put into the rooms that, that we were potentially looking to, to occupy.
Okay, that was a big cost.
The phone, the phone lines are there, so that's, that's good, that's been taken care of. It really, it's gonna come down to, um, moving. And I know that, uh, Doctor Gilson was trying to get some, um, quotes on how much it would cost us to hire somebody to come and move everything versus our maintenance people um, having to move everything in our town trucks or renting a U-Haul.
Okay.
Um, so we're, we're still waiting on a quote for a cost, um, for the move. But I think realistically, I, I think it makes sense to wait till the school year is done and the kids are out of the building before the move starts to happen. That said, if something catastrophic happens.
We have a place.
At T C P, there are now going to be phone lines in that building that we, we could, in an emergency, figure out a way to vacate and move everything.
Folding tables.
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep, if, if there were an emergency.
All right.
Um, but I'd like for it to be a little more planned than that.
Yeah.
So do we need to make it the official plan?
I think it, it's just this discussion, I think as long as you have this discussion and we're all on the same page, then we're fine, we already have a vote. Yeah? All right.
I will advise Carter.
We are leaving.
Thank you.
We are leaving T C Passios.
Yeah.
I'm so sorry.
Can we do it on July one?
I am so sorry. For what?
Your water, your water won't taste like rust and asbestos anymore.
You're leaving before you get a new office.
Well, I, I just want to be clear. We are not getting like an upgrade office.
Oh, no.
We're moving into classroom space, it'll be, it'll be similar to what the curriculum office looks like. There will be multiple of us.
Well, there's.
Massage chairs.
I feel like the lack of water in the, in the walls is an upgrade.
You might just want to stay another year.
I'm, I'm. I can save you all this time and energy in your, in your planning and interviewing.
Free soda machines.
Yeah, it's, it's not gonna be a, it's not gonna be a fantastic upgrade.
No, it's not like a fancy new office, but your, your waterfall feature will be gone.
It will be gone.
It'll be a few years, uh, the Ritter building.
Yeah.
We'll see.
Right, because like, that's how you think about this, if, if a plan moves forward with the Ritter building, this is a temporary.
Yeah, we just can't stay in Passios until the Ritter is, is ready for us, because it's not.
Relative to the central offices and a future home in the Ritter building as renovated, I did drop in to the folder, um, some handwritten notes um, based on the feedback and some of the discussion that was had at the last, um, meeting around this. And, um, there are new renderings, the concern, maybe that, maybe it's not enough square footage, but we'll, we'll work on that. Um, basically, the, the suggestion that we came up with was take the plan for ACE fully in the lower level out, with the exception of the kitchen, the kitchen would still stay there. But classroom space, workspace, would be flipped up to the main level and the ACE program would occupy basically, um, from the main entrance immediately to the right all the way to the front corner of the building that's out on Mass Ave. Um, they would still go down to prep and cook in the kitchen. They have to travel currently within T C P to, to do the same thing, so I think that that's workable.
And it gets them out of the basement.
Yeah, and we re, reassigned, you know, some office spaces. Again, uh, I, earlier this evening, there were new renderings.
Same way, what you have here is pretty close to what I saw tonight, I can't, I don't have a picture of tonight, but it looks very similar.
What I need to figure out, um, Mr. Jeffries told me that the reconfigured open space in that area where the data office and the Title One office were in the original map out, we were talking about having that whole space be open and he let me know that that's only gonna be about four hundred square feet, which is a good bit smaller than the current classroom size that they have. So I need to figure out, um, with Juliana Hanscom and the teacher, um, at the program, um, we can kind of map out four, four hundred square feet inside of the classroom that they're in now and try to figure out whether or not that's workable. I did ask that, um, if it is too small, if we could maybe take down the wall that separates that front room in the corner so that the whole space could be open and, um, maybe use one of the offices in, uh, the lower level adjacent to the kitchen for their quiet study tutoring location or an I D P meeting, if, if there were one. Um, kids would not be occupying the entire day in that location. I think that if that's what needs to happen, then we may need to relocate, um, the director of, um, food services and the director of, um, facilities elsewhere. elsewhere, maybe a space at Turkey Hill. I don't think that that's gonna be a significant negative impact to not have them present daily in an office space with the rest of central office. And I, I don't think that that should be a deal breaker move.
The more I think about it, if we can get away with putting the facilities director on the campus, I would be happier with that anyway. I don't have a strong opinion about food services, but, but facilities, I kind of do. I think this is a good plan. I, so for whatever it's worth, I haven't been around in a while, that wall is, is a new wall. That, so there, there's no.
It's not low.
There's no load-bearing walls in that space.
Then it's possible that if they open up that full space.
Yeah.
All to the right of the main entrance that.
When I was a kid, that was all completely open, so.
They can figure it out, right? They're architects. They'll just hold, they'll figure it out.
Oh, I know, but what books were in there?
No, it looks like a lot of the stuff they implemented tonight, so it's a good reader.
The other thing too is if there's enough space in that, uh, lower level, right at the, um, bottom of the stairs, we, we had, um, I believe even in this reconfigured model, we had, um, the special ed, uh, department secretaries located there. If there's enough square footage for their files and desks and, and maybe still another little bit of space, we could potentially put a desk, uh, in, in, in that area for food service or facilities.
Any other questions or comments about the district offices?
I watched the first part of the meeting and, um, it's beautiful. I liked the, uh, I thank you for making the changes. Yeah, I had noticed, I didn't know that everyone was gonna get, um, an office, but it's beautiful. I love the render. They, hopefully, uh, Michael Ray will send you the, the renders. They had renders of what the new entrance, I can, I took a picture.
So what, what is the, where will the, the general public enter the building?
See, this is the challenge that still remains, right?
This will be the end.
Where the parking is located right now at the Ritter Building is largely going to be, maybe even all going to be, um, handicap accessible parking.
Only six spots there.
Those are not typically the population that would be coming into the school department. People who would be coming to see us would be parking.
School street.
A good bit away, um, and likely entering the building and walking through all of the town office part of the building.
So it's a hallway.
So they'd enter on the outside, okay.
Yeah.
And if you're talking about folks who have mobility issues parking largely outside the current main entrance of the Ritter Building, they're gonna have to navigate all the way through the school part of the building to get to the town offices that they're going.
So there should be, there should be handicap on both ends.
There's gonna be.
But they may not, in order to meet their requirement for a number of spaces, we may get one regular parking space in that lot, right at that entrance.
I mean, once people know, once people know where to go, I don't think that's gonna be an issue. And, I mean.
The hard part is in this and what we had talked about with Mr. Jeffries after the last meeting that we talked about things here. There's no landing spot for the public. Like, where do they check in to say, okay, I'm here to meet with the superintendent? I'm here to meet with the director of special services? Are they just wandering the hall, looking for the office? I, like, that's, that's still part of the logistical challenge.
I think a lot of it was discussion of counters. There's gonna be counters that people can look and say, oh, somebody's at my counter, I can go and.
So those are kind of the logistical things that need to be thought through next. But I, I, I think we've found a.
I also like where you put your whole option. I like where you put your office, um, that it's close to the town manager and the town side of things, it's a hallway walk away. I hope that that leads to collaboration, um, with the town side of things. I think I like the fact that it's one integrated building. Good job, Brian. Good job.
That's, that's a group.
Municipal building design committee.
I, I just wanted to thank Dr. Burnham and Mrs. Hanscom for the amount of time spent trying to figure out how to get these programs to work in the space allotted. I think the solution that you both came up with was a really good one.
I am very grateful that we are not putting the ACE students in the basement. That just seems like such a bad idea. And I know that there are logistics reasons for that, but you don't, I mean, it just feels unfair and it feels mean, so.
Now they're in the room with the biggest window.
That's good work. Thank you. Alright, next item on the agenda is reports. Let's go down the line.
The, uh, capital planning committee, uh, will be hosting a meeting, as I mentioned earlier, for next Wednesday at 7:00 P M. We'll be reviewing, um, an early look at the interim town manager's recommendation for the capital plan. And some of his thinking around, um, funding for the capital plan, um, and a couple of other issues. One of which related to that generator and the, the issue with the dollar value on that generator will be discussed that night. There's a, another, uh, item that I think is also likely to be discussed, and I, I don't know to what extent, the interim town manager's gonna come down on this, but, um, I had articulated, I think in one of our meetings, a month or two ago, and, and to the superintendent and Dr. Gilson, my desire to move forward with a definitive plan for the track and field facility, uh, this year at town meeting. Uh, I think that that issue is getting to the point that we need to deal with it. Unfortunately, we're not gonna be there, uh, in time for a warrant article, uh, and regular, a regular borrowing plan as well as a revenue plan to offset that. What the interim town manager has, is looking at, and I think is going to suggest a solution, is to do a separate article funded by free cash to move forward with design and bid-ready documents for that project. And then put us on a path where we could bring a full project, uh, at special town meeting. That is admittedly outside of process in terms of what we have done for capital planning. We had put a large dollar number on next year's projection. But there's a confluence of events, number one being that area is just deteriorating, uh, continuing to deteriorate. I think we really need this time next year to have a plan to replace at least the field, if not the structural issues under the press box and behind the bleachers and all that sort of thing. Um, I, I just don't think that that issue can persist without resolution for another year. Uh, or we'll be putting out engineering tapes saying we can't use it, uh, which is, is my biggest concern. So the, the intent will be to, to kind of discuss that because admittedly, we're, we're looking at some options that are a little bit outside of normal processing procedure. And then, um, we are calling athletic advisory committee meetings, uh, for next Tuesday and the following Monday, where, uh, Dr. Gilson, uh, the athletic director and myself, we'll basically have an open meeting for parents, uh, to kind of listen to the proposal for the increase in athletic fees and to gain some, um, some feedback from them.
Are you getting the parents' notification?
So they, uh, are being informed, um, on Sports U, which is the primary means of communication through, uh, that, that we communicate with the athletes and parents right now. Uh, and then we'll also be submitting to the superintendent and to, to, uh, Mr. Santry for inclusion and newsletters and that sort of thing. That's what I got.
Oh, I forgot. Leaf met last week. It was a, it's a long week. Leaf met, we talked about, um, getting our 501(c)(3) status. We met with the, um, uh, tech person who's going to answer and can, answer us some questions and consult with us. And we talked about the grant cycle and we're continuing to meet, um, and lots about it. So we're progressing.
Carol?
FinCom will meet on the 13th. Next, I'll see, I'll write it down. Wait a minute. Yes, on February 13th. That's their next meeting. So, um, they had a meeting scheduled for tomorrow evening, but said they would cancel it if they didn't need it. And nothing is posted, so I guess they canceled it. And so they're meeting on the 13th.
So, uh, P T O met on the 6th. Um, they talked about the movie fundraiser. They had a projection for 400 tickets. They sold 378 of the 400, which was really a high percentage. Uh, they made, uh, $1,478. Uh, there were a couple of no-shows due to conflicts with basketball. They also have, and I always get the name of this wrong, I wanna say the League of Guardian Dance. That doesn't sound very exciting. So they had the special someone dance. The special someone dance is, I'm gonna get this right.
February 1st, aren't you?
I believe it is February 1st. Um, uh, it is. Last year, they like quadrupled the amount of money raised. They're doing a really good job. Uh, so that's the next event. They are also talking about requests for funds with people in school administration. And they had some good things to say about that process. Um, they're putting out applications for people to join P T O. And they're working on coordinating a game with the Worcester Railers. Apparently, you see the 5th grade, you're seeing somebody, 5th grade, 4th grade singing the national anthem?
Yep.
And so we're trying to figure out if we can do like the Ludenberg night there.
They did that last year too.
Yeah.
And did they say they had missed you?
Uh, no.
They didn't. I kept hearing about that.
One person. Uh, the one last thing, it's not a, um, a committee update, but, uh, I spoke with Mike Koshmerich last week. He's introducing the bus inspection bill that I had written and talked to his legislative assistant about. Basically, what it would do is it would compel buses, bus companies in order to complete inspections to show that they have made competitive bids in multiple places over a five-year period. So the hope is that we can strongly encourage them to take part in capitalism as a way to dry down prices. Cause apparently, m- m- very few busing situations are subject to competitive bids across the state.
There's also been a bill submitted relative to cell phones in schools. We'll see where that goes.
Congratulations on getting your bill.
It'll soon happen. Pretty cool. Just gotta get it passed now.
Yeah, yeah. Alright, so a couple. Uh, Carol and I met with the sick bank committee, uh, and for those of you who don't know, the sick bank committee is two school committee members and then two union members. We had two requests. Uh, one was unanimously approved. It was a 30-day, uh, sick leave request. And then we had one that was denied unanimously as well for lack of, basically lack of, uh, supporting data. With that said, we also have an additional meeting coming up this Friday, which we expect to be that additional data that we requested or that we, we was denied for. So that's the hope. The Ludenberg Municipal Building Design Committee met tonight at 5:30, so they, they did have a, an updated, um, design from the architect. It definitely had a lot of good improvements. And I'm excited to, to see it progress. Uh, the architect's definitely listening and, uh, taking that feedback. It would be great if more public come to the meeting and give feedback. But we definitely got a, a good amount of feedback last meeting and then this meeting from the committee as well. So it's going well. I think that's it. Uh, next item on the agenda is public comment. I'll open up to public comment from the public. Seeing none, I'll open up to public comment from the committee.
I have sort of a real quick one. Uh, I wasn't here when you announced your retirement, uh, last time. And I just wanna say that I have learned a lot listening to you give presentations here, talking to you at budget, uh, during the budget process and on policy subcommittee. And you deserve a break, but I'm sad to see you go.
Any other public comment? Seeing none. Uh, topics for future discussion? Anything that we haven't talked about?
I think we have plenty.
Anything you wanna add on top?
No.
No worries.
Then I'll look for a motion to adjourn at 9:39 P M.
Make the motion.
I'll second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.